Welcome. I would now call to order our regular scheduled Apex Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. And I'd like to welcome those who have joined us on the live stream. A few things before we get started. Most of you know, we do have printed agendas here. If you want to grab one, go out to the door to the left and it's on the podium. And all of those at home can follow up on our Town Council tab under apexnc.org and access the agenda there. We start our meets out with an invocation, so I would like to do that at this time. But first, I would like to read a statement. The town of Apex values and celebrates diversity and inclusion. We see diversity as a strength that binds our community together, inviting members from different faith communities to deliver an invocation at the beginning of our council meeting supports this unity. Recognizing that not everyone practices the same traditions, we welcome you to have a private moment of silence during this time. So if you would, join me in a private moment of silence and just reflect on some of the challenges we have today. But we do know that as we come together as a community, we can get through those challenges. So if you would just take a break from the world and let's just focus on what we're here to do tonight. And that's do great things for Apex. So please join me. Thank you. And if you would, just join me in a quick prayer if you would like. Bow your head. Father, we come to you. We thank you for this time that we join together as a community to just walk in our purpose and to do what you called us to do. We thank you for the joy you have given us, the health and prosperity of this community. Continue to illuminate and manifest in our community in your will. Again, let our community walk together as we face the challenges. But we know, Lord, that you are with us and you can get us through anything. Bless our town council, our staff, who make decisions and serve our citizens in unity through receiving wisdom from you. It is in your name we pray. Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you plan to speak tonight in our public forum or public hearing, please don't forget to come to my right here and sign up on the appropriate sheet to speak. And we want to make sure that we bring you up and you're able to speak tonight. So what we'll do now is move to our consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine to be enacted by one motion with the adoption of consent agenda and without discussion. If a council member requests discussion of an item, the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. All right. Do we have any updates on consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there's one addition council is aware of, placed at your desk, and you received a copy of it last night. It's a resolution in support of clean water and for monitoring and testing and removal of regulated and unregulated contaminants from Jordan Lake.
Okay. That the update on consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, motion to approve with the addition.
Okay, motion to approve. Second, discussion. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to setting of the meeting agenda. And do we have any updates with the meeting agenda?
None that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion to set the meeting agenda. All right, motion.
Second.
We got a second by Councilman Brett Gant. We'll give that to him. All right, discussion. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, no. All right, we have a set meeting agenda. All right, we now move to our public forum. While we start us bringing around the sheet, keep in mind that you have a three-minute time limit. We do have a series of lights there, starting with a green, and then it moves to yellow. That's a warning. And then as you get to red, it's time to start wrapping up your comments. And I will try to give you a little bit of time, but we need to make sure we watch the time. So please watch the lights. So we'll get that done at this time. Moving right along. I'll open up our public forum. The first name we have is Larry Harris, Sr. If you would, please come up.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for signing the wrong sheet. You had too many seats today. I can only one time. I'll come at the end of the agenda for presentation.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll stand down on that. Okay, very good. All right, that was the only name to sign up for public forum. So we'll close the public forum at this time.
Just for clarification from Mr. Harris, are you here to address the new business item, sir?
No, I'm here to make a presentation to the...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, it's with the new business item, right?
Yes, the committee.
Okay, is he good to speak during a new business? Or do we need to have him in the public forum?
I'll be in there.
Okay. Why don't you come up and set us off? You want to come up now and give a presentation? Okay, why don't you do that? Come on up.
Yeah, I want to make a presentation to Councilwoman Cola Dozier, sign up for recognition for June 10th.
Why don't you come on up? Yeah, thank you.
Mom, you ever come down, Mrs. Dozier? Well, as she's coming, I just want to say a word about my appreciation to the council for what you're doing tonight and recognizing June 10th as the official holiday of the town of Apex. I don't know if you, well, I'm sure you understand the significance of what you're doing. And you didn't have to do it, but you did it. And I think it's commendable that next year, on June 19th, we'll do more than just remember that this thing was done tonight, but we'll move from protest to policy and continue to do the good things that changed our lives and make better for redeeming those who had suffered the oppression of slavery. And so Ms. Dozier is all fit to push this matter. And you just don't know how much we appreciate you. So we don't have a great deal of anything other than gratitude for you. But I do have a little gift for you. You can come over here just a little closer. I'm going to hand this to you. If you could display it. It's the June 10th t-shirt.
All right, good.
So, I mean, it is kind of like a little dress down, like men don't shave sometimes and they don't jack it sometimes. So I may put this on. That's okay.
Okay. Please do. Thank you. Thank you all you do. My pleasure.
Thank you, sir. All right, we now move to our public hearings. We'll go ahead and start with public hearing number one. Public hearing and possible motion to approve rezoning application 20 CZ05 West Village Pod Amendment. Presenting tonight is Sarah Van Agar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. All right. Good evening. I'll be presenting rezoning case 20 CZ05 West Village Pod Amendment. The subject site that we'll be talking about this evening is located, here in this general vicinity. So west of 540 and Kelly Road and north of Old US-1. This is part of the West Village Pod. We'll bring you closer into the site. This here is what we're looking at. Subject property is located at 2412 Kelly Road, is a little over 35 acres. Again, we're looking here at this subject parcel. It's just this piece within the West Village Pod. It is currently zoned, planned unit development, conditional zoning, case number 15 CZ33. And you'll see here surrounded by pod CZ zoning. This is West Village. This over here is West Winds Community and is zoned rural residential. This is just a pod amendment, so it is a proposed zoning is still pod conditional zoning, is consistent with the 2045 land use map. So we talked to the subject property is located off of Kelly Road, north of Old US-1, southeast of South Winds Run. The property is currently under construction for the West Village Pod development. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on April 22nd, 2020. The neighborhood meeting report is attached. I also have an email we have received from a neighbor that I will read to you. This is, was sent to us on Monday, July 13th. "My wife and I support the amendment and would like to thank the developer for working with the neighborhood to bring a water line and fire hydrant to our street, South Winds Run. Many of the wells in the neighborhood are inadequate, and assistance with obtaining water was one of the key requests from the neighborhood during the original zoning process. We would also request continued assistance from the town in bringing water to our street." Timothy L. Donley and Cynthia O. Donley, 2508 South Winds Run, Apex 27502. And again, just bringing you here to the overall site, this is the overall West Village Pod. What we are talking about is this parcel in here. And what we are talking about, the pod amendment, is going to be in this area right here. There are no other changes. So what you'll see on the layout just affects right here. And I will read to you the change. What you can see up in front of you is the current pod language. And we have an additional pod language. And again, this is all related to buffer in that area that I showed you previously. So the pod amendment is revised that change to Section 10 Natural Resource and Environmental Data, Section D Landscape Buffering and Screening, the proposed change is that it will read, "This pod will be subject to and meet the requirements of Section 8.26 of the UDO buffering as provided for within. Please note the perimeter buffer associated with the westernmost property line has been increased above the 10-foot required, above the minimum 10-foot required buffer in order to provide additional screening to the residential land located to the west of the project area. While a majority of this westernmost buffer includes 30 feet of undisturbed buffer and 10 feet of type A for 40-foot total, a portion of the 40-foot buffer along the western side of PIN 1798 will be disturbed and replanted to meet type A standards, creating a 40-foot type A buffer as shown on sheet C2. Allowing grading in this portion of the buffer will allow for reduced retaining wall height as requested by the neighboring property owner." So again, that is the only change is for the buffer language here and impacts the overall pod layout just in this area here. Planning staff recommends approval of 20 CZ05 West Village Pod Amendment with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The planning board heard this item at their July 13th, 2020 meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The proposed rezoning to amend the current pod CZ zoning district is reasonable in that it is consistent with the 2045 land use map, which classifies the subject property as medium-density residential and mixed-use high-density residential office employment commercial services. The proposed rezoning is in the public interest because of the amendment to, is in the public interest because the amendment to the existing pod condition will allow for disturbance within a buffer in order to reduce the height of a retaining wall as requested by the adjacent property owner. The buffer will be replanted to meet the UDO planting requirements. The proposed rezoning will also maintain the character and appearance of the area. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well. Thank you.
So am I correct in assuming that this 40-foot buffer was initially done at the request of this neighbor, the 40-foot A, undisturbed 30 and 10-foot A? And the neighbor's now requesting it to be modified to reduce the retaining wall?
I was not the project planner during the original rezoning. I do not know where that originated from in 2015.
I can answer that.
Perfect.
Yeah, Bob Zoomwatt with McAdams. Good to see you guys tonight. I worked on the original zoning. Josh Decker is working on this amendment, but he is at the beach, so I'm covering for Josh. But I was involved originally, and I don't know that there was specific discussion other than just the width and it being undisturbed then. But I think once we got into construction drawings, I think when he saw the height of the wall, he came back to us and said, "I think I'd prefer to let you grade it and plant it back. It'll look better along my property." So we said, "That's fine. If that's what you want, we'd be happy to do that instead."
So is there no retaining wall? It's just going to be a buffer?
I don't know if it's completely gone, but it's much reduced over what it was. And Mr. Anderson, he's happy, I believe. So, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and open up public hearing at this time. And if Bob Zoomwatt would come on up, please. So you're good? Okay. All right. All right, we'll now call up Betty Parker. Is Betty Parker here?
Mr. Mayor, here for later items. If I sound wrong, I should call again.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing and refer the matter back to council for discussion, lead to a possible motion.
Well, I appreciate the developer here, listening to the neighbors, and at most locally, you know, some expense to the developer going back and regrading and redoing their design and going through the application process again. I appreciate them doing that for their neighbor. So I'm in favor of this rezoning and making motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion second. Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to public hearing number two, quasi judicial public hearing and possible motion regarding a revised major site plan for 540 Flex and Business Park located at 1600 Olive Chapel Road. And we have all parties here. I'll let go ahead and start with the opening statement, and then we'll move to the rest of the proceeding. So, "The town council normally functions in a legislative capacity. Major site plan hearings are quasi judicial, which means that the council acts essentially as a court of law. The burden is upon the applicant for the major site plan to put on evidence to show that they meet the criteria found in the town's unified development UDO, or code otherwise known as the UDO. Anyone opposed to the application must put on evidence of a similar kind, showing the criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath. All testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, material, and substantial. Pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses or certain matters. Hearsay evidence will not be admitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make its decision based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing." "The town council will now take up the case of the major site plan for 540 Flex and Business Park located at 1600 Olive Chapel Road." So I'll go ahead now and open up the public hearing and get anyone who plans to testify to be sworn in by our town clerk. I want to remind the council that you do have a checklist in front of you. Give you an opportunity to check off on the standard as the testimony is given and take note of any questions that you may have about a particular standard. So you do have those.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would like to go ahead and identify the applicant. Who's the applicant here?
The applicant will be 540 Flex.
Okay.
For your record, David Godfrey, Savage Godfrey, will be the representative.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. All right. Any supporters or any opponents to this? All right, that's great. All right, we'll move right along. All right. I will now give each council member and myself an opportunity to describe any communications about this case that have been made with or by him prior to tonight's hearing, any relational or financial conflict related to this case, and whether he or she will be able to decide this case impartially and solely on the competent evidence presented at this hearing. So we'll start with Councilmember Cheryl Stollis.
I have not had any communications. I don't think I have any conflicts, and I think I can be an impartial person in this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Breck Gant.
I have not had any conflict, no financial interest, and I can judge impartially.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Dozier.
I've made no communications on this, have no potential conflicts, and can be impartial.
Okay. I myself had no communications about this case, no relational financial conflict, and I can decide impartially if needed.
I've had no communication, no conflicts, and I can decide impartially.
Okay.
I've had no communication, no financial interest, and I will be impartial.
Okay, thank you. Now, I ask council members, have you viewed a site at all? And if so, if you would, just describe your observations, if any. Anyone? Okay. All right. All right, well, now allow opening statements, and we'll start with staff, if you would. Ms. Mayo.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Mayo. I have a master's degree in city planning, and I've been working for the town as a city planner for the last seven years. Wow. And just to orient you to the site real quick, 540 Flex is located on Olive Chapel Road, just to the east of 540, where the bridge crosses over. Just on the other side of 540 is the Public Shopping Center. South of there is a subdivision here. Olive Chapel Professional Park is just to the west. This used to be several single-family homes, part of the Chapel Ridge subdivision, and was approved within the last three to four years, I think. The site is approximately 10.74 acres. And the original major site plan was approved on April 15th, 2014, and included about 132,500 square feet of office and flex space and storage in about eight buildings. This aerial is from just earlier, just earlier last month. So as you can see, almost all of the site has already been constructed. So what we're here is actually to discuss and update a portion of the plan that just needs to be altered in order to still be compliant. It's a building that's already been built, was approved in a slightly different way than the site plan's approved, so it caused some ripple effects, if you will, that we need to adjust. And that's what this entire presentation is regarding. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on March 31st, 2020. Because of COVID, it was virtual. However, no one attended. On page one of your staff report, I have in bold at the bottom, kind of an overview of exactly what's going on here. So I'm going to skip down to this side, and this gives us a side-by-side comparison of the section of the property that we're actually looking at here. The revised major site plan is submitted to reflect changes to Building E, the associated parking, the eastern buffer immediately adjacent to it, and the shape of the SCM immediately adjacent to it. Building E was approved on the initial major site plan, and I have a typo here, so I apologize, as at 4,950 square feet. It says 4,250. That number was actually on the approved construction drawings. We're allowed to have buildings go down in size typically, as long as it doesn't affect anything like RCA buffers, that kind of thing, between major site plan approval and CDs. This one, the initial approval was 700 square feet bigger than the CDs went to. And then when it was approved by building inspections, it increased up to 5,221 square feet, roughly. When the footprint of that building increased on the building plan approval, it caused the drive aisle here to have to shift outward, as it's shown here. I tried to color code these to make it easier to read. The green is the approved buffer from 2014. The green here is the buffer that's being proposed by the applicant. This section right here, kind of looks like a triangle, just this smidge, actually encroached into the approved buffer because the building size, but also the width through here, changed. These smaller spaces here are parking spots, covered parking spots, which is very nice for the people who are using these flex spaces. But because the building shape changed, that meant that when they installed it, they had to increase the depth of this so that you can actually back your truck out, because most of these are contractor spots or people who have larger trucks to access their businesses. And that shifted this out. So that encroached into that 60-foot buffer. The uses to the east, so these adjacent properties, north is over here to your left, so east is up, has actually changed since the original major site plan approved. Previously, these were three and four and five acre homes, possibly larger than that. I don't call the original size. Now, it's an office park adjacent to it. So before, they were required to have a 50-foot type A buffer. They did a 60-foot one in order to help appease the previous single-family homeowners. Now, they're only required to have a 15-foot type B buffer. They would like to request a change only in this area of the buffer to 20-foot type A. Yes. I'm sorry, 25-foot type A. The remainder of the buffers on the plan are not affected in any way. I've listed on page two the uses and conditions that were approved in 2018 when this project came back to you for rezoning. At the time, we added two uses to it and added a couple of additional conditions to make them a little, and reworded a couple of the earlier ones to make them easier to read. That's just on there as an FYI, give you an idea of what's going on in there. Page three, I just have a little footnote, just in case somebody notices. The buffer adjacent to 540 East, our current UDO requires to be a 50-foot type A. The previous UDO required that to be a 50-foot type E. They're not touching that, so they're not proposing a change. This is, other than a very minor change to the size of the SCMs on the plan, which has been reviewed by our stormwater group, and they do believe that it will meet the UDO. We made sure of all of that. These are the changes that the applicant is requesting, and this is what they need to have in order to come into compliance. It's not a viable option for them to tear down their building and remove all of their parking. And unfortunately, in at least some part, this was something that was not caught between the departments, between the approved plans for the site and the approved plant, building plans. So there was, they didn't realize, the applicant didn't realize they'd done anything wrong, so far as I've told me. And we didn't catch it until we started to review the plat, and I was able to look at the aerial. So it has been in place for a while now. To the best of my knowledge, this project as presented is in compliance with the standards of the current UDO.
Mayo, thank you. Mr. Godfrey, do you wish to make an opening statement?
Just to say that that was an accurate and comprehensive summary of where we are and why we're here, and particularly the existing conditions on paragraph on page one of the staff report, the project data section on page one of the staff report, and then skipping over the things that are not impacted, such as utility, storm drainage, lighting, et cetera. Page three of the staff report, the buffer chart and the one paragraph underneath, that has eloquently explained, adequately describes why we're here. So that's my opening statement.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any evidence, additional evidence? Is there any evidence, additional evidence by staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Does Town Council wish to cross-examine?
I have a question. This council has, you know, I think, been very concerned about the tree, the loss of canopy cover, and I was wondering, I guess for the applicant maybe, or staff, like, was there a consideration to, while you're doing this, to maybe say, okay, well, it meets the UDO, but we'll enhance some of the buffers, maybe not to a certain type, but just plant a few more trees, in particular along 540? I was wondering if that was ever part of the discussion?
That was not something that staff discussed with the applicant. We were primarily concerned with remedying this particular situation. The applicant is welcome to speak to that if they'd like. There is a condition that was added in 2018, a zoning condition, rather, that is the bottom of page. It's condition number six for the zoning conditions, that evergreen screening with a six-foot minimum height at time of planting will be provided from Olive Chapel Road along the eastern property line behind Building D. Building D is this building right here. So there has been some additional stuff added already. I definitely understand how this is not directly tied to your case, to your question, but I just wanted to point that out to you.
As a follow-up to Councilman Gant, is there space on the property for more tree replantings?
I have not personally visited the property in some time, just haven't had a chance to. I would think so, and I would think that staff could work with them to do so. However, adding conditions to a major site plan, because it's a quasi-judicial public hearing, the council's role, and my understanding, and Laurie can please tell me to quiet down if I'm speaking incorrectly, is simply to determine whether it meets the UDO and meets the criteria that are listed there. I do not know if we can add conditions anymore, but it would be the applicant's job to agree or disagree with one.
So conditions can be added to a major site plan as part of a quasi-judicial decision, but they would be conditions that would bring the site into compliance with the UDO?
That makes sense.
I have a question, Shelley.
Just a second.
Back to the quasi-judicial nature of this here, does that carve out that we're removing, was that part of the RCA dedication for this property?
It was, however, the RCA still is more than sufficient. If you go back to page three of your staff report, there's a shorter table just above the buffer table. The UDO requirement for this area is 20%. That's 2.12 acres. The applicant is providing just over 23%, and that should say 2.47 acres, not 2.47%. Sorry about that.
Is that 2.47 acres the additional, is that inclusive or removing of this additional carve-out?
That includes removing that section.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one question. Do we have systems in place so that this type of thing doesn't happen again?
We're working on that right now. We are trying to improve our communication between all the departments as we speak.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Mr. Godfrey, do you wish to cross-examine?
Sorry.
Do you wish to cross-examine?
Are you aware of any objections to the...
You come on up. Come on, Mr.
So we can get on the record.
Are you aware of any objections or protest amendments?
I am not aware of any objections to the amendment.
And is it your opinion based on your training and experience, in reviewing the original MDS and UDO, that this amendment complies with the UDO?
Yes, sir. As it stands, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. No further questions.
No further questions. All right, thank you. All right, does staff, applicant have any non-repetitive rebuttal at all? Okay. All right, we now move to closing arguments. So Ms. Mayo, would you like to start?
Planning staff has the closing.
Okay. Mr. Godfrey, do you have any closing arguments?
County Council wants to present evidence.
Yes, yes, that's my fault. Thank you.
We swore to, and we hope we're only using that.
My name's Peter Conoson. I work with Jones Conoson Engineering, 221 North Salem Street. I am a professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, education background. I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering, and also a master's of engineering in civil engineering. Been in land development for the last 25 years.
We would tender that Mr. Conoson is an expert witness.
Okay.
So can you, well, first of all, did you prepare some exhibits as part of this that you may find useful in illustrating your testimony?
Yes, we prepared the major site plan revision that was submitted to the town of Apex, and I have two exhibits here that I would like to pass out, better color-coded, that show the area of interest. If you don't mind, I could, am I allowed to approach?
So while Mr. Conoson's doing that, for purposes of the record, I'll refer to applicant or petitioner, whichever version you all want to use. The application has Districts One, the accompanying drawings have Districts Two, and the sketch that he's now handing out has Districts Exhibit Three, so that at the end of this, we can formally introduce the evidence to the record. Does everybody have one?
Yes.
So, Conoson, if you would, if you were, use that as needed, as well as the checklist of nine things that the council's required to address to approve the amendment. And can you just briefly explain why we're here, what we're asking? Sorry.
The two exhibits, excuse me, the two exhibits that are before you, Exhibit A was taken from the 2014 Town Council set for the major site plan approval. On it is shown in yellow is the original layout for Building E, which is the area under question, and you can see in orange is the driveway, which accesses those rear storage units, and in green is the originally approved 60-foot type A buffer. On Exhibit B is taken from the 2020 revised master plan, revised, excuse me, major site plan that was recently submitted. Again, in yellow is Building E, so you can see what the change in that building configuration as far as the footprint looks like. Shown in orange is the actual encroachment that went into the 60-foot buffer, and that area is roughly 1,000 square feet. What is shown in orange, or excuse me, in green is the revised buffer from 60-foot to 25-feet, again, a type A buffer. Just to give you dimension, that length of what is being proposed to change is roughly 138 feet in length. The total length of the eastern buffer is roughly 1,000 feet. So we're really impacting 138 out of roughly 1,000. Like to read this statement. The 540 Flex in Business Park Development is Zoned Tech Flex and consists of 10.74 acres off Olive Chapel Road. The original major site plan was approved in 2014 and included about 1,000, or 132,568 square feet of office, flex space, and storage in eight buildings. In the construction of Building E, the building plans were approved, showing a revised footprint, which increased the square footage from 4,950 square feet to 5,221 square feet. This is shown by the comparison that you've seen in Exhibits A and B. During construction, the eastern driveway for Building E was shifted further east to provide access, and unfortunately, it was found to encroach the 60-foot buffer by a recent as-built survey that was done. This encroachment is shown in orange, again, in Exhibit B. The 60-foot type A buffer was required when the adjacent properties were zoned rural residential, but now that these properties have been developed as office for Olive Chapel Professional Park, the buffer can be reduced to a type, or a 15-foot type B buffer per the UDO. This major site plan revision is submitted to approve the reduction in the buffer to a 25-foot type A buffer along about 138 feet of the required buffer. The remainder of the perimeter buffers remained unchanged. This revision also updates the site to reflect as-built conditions that were, again, completed by a recent survey. I also want to note that the overall square footage of the eight buildings has been reduced by about 4,692. So we've come down in square footage, which was allowed on the original major site plan. As part of my review of this major site plan revision, I am confirming that the following standards are met. The 540, number one, the 540 Flex in Business Park major site plan revision is compatible with the character of the surrounding land use, consisting of Olive Chapel Road to the south, Olive Chapel Professional Park to the east, I-540 to the west, and Chapel Ridge to the north. The only change in the surrounding land use from the original approval is the development of Olive Chapel Professional Park. Number two, the development and uses in the major, the revised major site plan meet the supplemental standards referenced in Section 4.4 of the UDO. Number three, the development proposed in the major site plan revision in its general layout comply with all appropriate standards of Article 8, general development standards. I want to reference three items. Number one is RCA is greater than the minimum required 20%. We are proposing through this major site plan revision roughly 23%. All landscaping and buffering either meets or exceeds the UDO requirements, and parking, exterior lighting, and signage either meet or exceed the UDO requirements. Number four, the major site plan revision complies with Section 8.1.4, slope protection requirements and the mitigation of steep slopes. Number five, the development proposed in the major site plan revision conforms to the requirements of Section 7.4, dedication of right-of-way for thoroughfare streets and highways, as right-of-way dedication for Olive Chapel Road has been provided for construction of the ultimate section. Development proposed in the major site plan revision conforms to Section 7.5, required improvements by providing public infrastructure to the site, including sewer, water, and electric service. The development proposed in the major site plan revision in its general layout comply with all relevant standards of the UDO. The development proposed in the major site plan revision comply with applicable standards of Article VII subdivision. And number nine, the development proposed in the major site plan revision will not adversely impact public services and facilities. That's the testimony that I have, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions by the council?
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may clarify, the record identified what Peter just handed out as petitioner or applicant's Exhibit Three, but I didn't realize it was two sheets, so we'll make that for the record, 3-1 and 3-2, so the record be consistent afterward. And we would like at this time to introduce those exhibits as evidence for the record.
Okay. All right, we accept that as the evidence at this time.
Thank you. I anticipate no further witnesses unless the council has questions. Oh, you know what? I'll get back to one. I'm sorry. One question, only because I remember it came up over here about trees. In this area that was inadvertently extended into when the drive got shifted, were any trees cut out of that area to best your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, no trees were removed in that area.
Thank you, Douglas. Can you throw across out of that? So we do not anticipate, our sworn witness, but yours here and available, if anybody from the council would like to ask some questions. Nobody, but the petitioner or applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any cross-examination? Now we go to, we give the opportunity for staff and applicant to present non-repetitive rebuttal evidence, opportunity of cross-examination by council. Anything? Okay? All right, now we go to closing arguments. So staff, any closing arguments? Any closing arguments, sir? Okay. All right, council members, review the checklist. If you have any questions about the testimony related to a particular standard, now's the time to ask questions to the applicant or staff at this time. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Next, council will deliberate over all the finding and the facts applying to UDO standard as they relate to the issue of approving and approving with conditions or denying the major site plan. So at this time, turn it over to you for a motion, if we have any. Yes.
I'd like to move we approve the major site plan revision, as I find it complies with the nine standards for us in the checklist.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion of second discussion. Okay. Go ahead and take a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, they passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to public hearing number three, public hearing of possible motion regarding proposed amendments to the transit plan map in the thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan Map, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Shannon Cox, Long Range Planning Manager.
We have numerous amendments to the Long Range Transportation Plan this evening. I'd like to suggest that the Town Council listen to my presentation, and I can address any questions that you may have, but then wait to open the public hearing until you hear the next item, which is 20CZ01. These two items are closely related, as you'll see. The first proposed amendment is to the Transit Plan Map. Our current Transit Plan Map shows three future rail and bus transit center. Those are shown by the blue circles. One is in a downtown area. One is along South Salem Street between Apex Barbecue Road and NC 540, and then the furthest to the south is in the future Veridia Traditional Neighborhood Development. The proposed amendment is to remove that midpoint bus and rail transit center. This was added to our Transit Plan Map when light rail was in consideration for this area. That's no longer the case. The area is moving forward with commuter rail. One of the differences between these two types of systems is the spacing of stations. So while light rail has stations much closer together, commuter rail is typically further apart. There is some recent work in our region addressing commuter rail that we can learn from when looking at our transit plan. There's a study underway from Garner to Morrisville, and a peer review was done for that project. It found that in areas with higher density, or, sorry, on average, commuter rail stations are typically about 4.7 miles apart. In areas with medium to high density for our region, Wake Transit is recommending that stations are at least two miles apart. That would be areas with 10 or more... That would be areas with 10 or more people plus jobs per acre. And then anything, any areas with lower density, that they should be about five miles apart. There's also some Federal Transit Administration research that suggests spacing of three miles and much higher densities of 25 to 35 people per acre around commuter rail and 100 to 150 employees. So this midpoint station would be roughly two miles from the downtown station and slightly less than that from the future Veridia Station. In addition, the existing land use there, in Salem Village, there was a zoning condition limiting that area to four dwelling units per acre, so roughly 11 people per acre. Our future land use map shows similar densities for the adjacent areas. So based on station spacing and both existing and future land use plans, this station is recommended for removal. We did also look at design constraints, which I've detailed in the staff report, but I won't get into detail about that. Planning staff recommend approval of the proposed amendment. It was reviewed with staff from Public Works and Transportation, Police, and Fire, and there were no concerns. Our Transit Advisory Committee has not had an opportunity to formulate a recommendation, but it was shared with them, and I have not received any concerns. Finally, the planning board unanimously recommended approval of this amendment. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the transit plan map amendment.
Would it turn into just a bus stop?
So we would remove this at this point, because those buses would have been intended to bring people to the commuter rail station. What I'd like to do is review our local transit routes, because we made some changes to GO Apex and Route 305. So review those and bring forward a different transit amendment associated with that.
At a different time.
At a different time, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Cox?
I want to preview the next discussion, which is about our thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan Map. There's a lot to look at here. So the slides that I'll be showing you, this first slide shows what we're calling Scenario 1. So this is a grouping of changes that staff are recommending. The second scenario is called Scenario 2. This is a grouping of changes that are supported by the applicant for the next item, 20CZ01. And that's why it's important to listen to both. There's similarities between the two, and then there's differences. So I'll walk you through those. Because it's a lot to look at, we'll go through a final slide showing Scenario 1, if approved, and then Scenario 2, if approved. So I would suggest using the table in the staff report. It should be on page eight. And I'm going to go in this order as I explain these. This also includes a comparison of whether a change is included in Scenario 1, Scenario 2, recommended by staff and/or the applicant. So we'll start with the, there's the mouse, with the removal of the future realignment of South Salem Street, showing that here. This is on our plan mainly for that rail and bus transit center. So if the rail and bus transit center is removed, there's really no need to realign South Salem Street in this location. This change is included in both Scenario 1 and in Scenario 2. The second change is also shown in both scenarios. We have a future roundabout shown at South Salem and Apex Barbecue Road. This was added to our transportation plan in 2000, well, I'm not going to say that, but it was based on 2013 traffic data. And at that time even, we knew that this would have to be sized for future multiple lanes. Now that we have updated traffic data, it really would not operate well. In addition, it's close to the railroad tracks, so we would have to shift the roundabout away. It would create a change in the road network. So both staff and the applicant are requesting removal of that, and it's shown in both scenarios. The next couple of changes are where these two scenarios substantially differ. So back to Scenario 1. We currently show a major Collector Street extending from Woodall Crest, crossing South Salem Street, and heading into Veridia and Veridia Parkway. As part of the Campo Southwest Area Study, we had a roadway engineer look at this alignment and propose an update, an update for us that would shift, I'm sorry, it's very hard to see the mouse from this far away, shift the grade separation slightly to the east, and then also adjust the alignment of this major Collector Street. So that was something that we planned to bring forward to you as a recommendation from the Southwest Area Study. While we were working on that, the applicant for 20CZ01 came forward, and they are actually requesting to remove that major Collector Street and the associated grade separation. So that's shown in Scenario 2 only. Attachment 1 of the staff report explains their reasons for this request, so I'll just briefly summarize those as relatively low traffic projections of 5,100 vehicles per day by 2045, the substantial land area that would be required to build a bridge over South Salem Street and the railroad, the anticipated cost, which they estimated is about 20 million of constructing this future crossing. So we did want to look into those traffic volumes. They did seem a little low to staff as well for what we would expect on this roadway. So we worked with Campo, and those actually came from the triangle regional model. So that's a long-range travel model done for the entire region. That model uses inputs, including future residents, and for this area, kind of shown between Apex Barbecue, South Salem, and 540, the model was showing 333 future single-family dwelling units and 18 multifamily by the year 2045. That's in comparison to 1,500 requested as part of the rezoning. In addition, the model shows between 6,500 and 6,700 vehicles per day for Apex Barbecue Road by 2045, and that's roughly equivalent to what was measured in 2018. So the model is not working well for this area, and we do not recommend relying on that for this decision. In addition to the capacity provided by this future roadway, it will serve a critical role in vehicular connectivity. There are limited crossings, both existing and planned, of South Salem Street. If you consider the distance between the future Apex Peakway Crossing and 540, that's a distance of about 1.3 miles. If we don't think about toll roads, it would be about 1.8 miles to Pleasant Plains. And then if we don't think about toll roads or future roads, it's about 2.5 between Pleasant Plains and Tingen, which is where those crossings would occur. Even if you think about 5,100 vehicles being a conservative amount, that's a lot on those existing roads. While the current focus is on development west of South Salem, we're also keeping in mind what can happen east of South Salem Street, which is substantial, and this roadway would connect through that entire area. Finally, this grade-separated crossing was originally added to the transportation plan in 2002. It was retained with our updates in 2011, 2019, the small area plan, as well as the Southwest Area Study, and all of those had substantial public engagement. So, back to, actually, I'm going to start with Scenario 2 this time. The next major difference, and I'm on row F, the applicant is requesting removal of this future three-lane thoroughfare, basically an extension of Holland Road, from Kelly Road to South Salem Street. Again, summarizing from their memo, they cited low, in this case, 2,600 vehicles per day projected traffic volumes by 2045, concerns about potential conflicts with the gantries and tolling system on 540, the anticipated need for substantial fill and potential environmental impacts and costs, and redundancy with South Salem Street. Finally, there were also concerns about dissecting the planned residential areas associated with the rezoning case. So I'm not going to go into detail again about the travel demand model, but the same issues are occurring here. In addition, we'd like to note that this roadway will also provide important future connectivity. We need to keep in mind that the Kelly Road intersection with Old US-1 could become a right-in, right-out in the future. So that means that southbound traffic on Kelly, wanting to turn left, would need to use Apex Barbecue Road, oops, sorry, Apex Barbecue Road, this future road that we're talking about, or go through the West Village neighborhood. So for connectivity, it's important there. In addition, the fire department indicated that this road is important for access from Fire Station Number 5, which is up at Kelly and Apex Barbecue Road, and that it's an important route for people to use in case of emergencies. We are suggesting some changes to help address some of the concerns, so I'm showing you Scenario 1 now. Staff are recommending downgrading the extension between Kelly and South Salem to a major collector instead of a three-lane thoroughfare. We are suggesting a slight shift in the alignment of Holland Road to avoid stream impacts. And we did look at the location of this grade separation. We still think that it's in the best place based on the information we have now, but would recommend an approach that's slightly more perpendicular.
Do you know what the estimated cost would be for this particular one?
I do not, and it was not provided in the memo from the applicant. Okay, so those were the major changes. The others are really related to, you know, once you make one change, it affects the network of Collector Streets. So west of South Salem Street, we are, staff in Scenario 1, is proposing to maintain a major Collector connection to South Salem, two minor Collector Street connections to South Salem, and one to Apex Barbecue Road. But these are different, and you can see those differences from the current plan. In Scenario 2, similarly, the applicant is proposing two minor street connections to South Salem, one major Collector Street connection to South Salem, and then one minor Collector to Apex Barbecue. So staff are not recommending the removal of the grade separations. However, if town council approves those, we don't have concerns about this Collector Street network. We can support that plan. Back to Scenario 1. These changes east of South Salem Street are only in Scenario 1. They're not at all related to the rezoning request. But changing this grade separation does result in some shifts east of South Salem Street. We're recommending shifting the, what I'll call, the James Street extension further east, so that it can connect to this road. We are recommending also shifting slightly the alignment of the future minor Collector extension from Padstone. We would suggest shifting this minor Collector Street to use existing right-of-way at Tingen and the associated roundabout as well. We would recommend adding future local connectors, which are really residential roads, but they're shown on the plan for connectivity, to show that connection from Flint Valley Lane in both directions. And finally, we're recommending changing the functional classification of this road from a minor Collector Street, which allows driveways, residential driveways, to a major Collector Street, which does not. And that's because it connects to four-lane thoroughfares. We want to make sure that we're planning for appropriate development in the future. So just again, this is Scenario 1, maintaining the grade separations, altering the Collector Street network on both sides, and removing the realignment of South Salem Street and the roundabout. And this is Scenario 2, removing those grade-separated crossings, revising the Collector network only on the west, removing the realignment of South Salem and the roundabout. Planning staff recommend the amendments to the thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan Map described as Scenario 1. Staff from the following departments also support this recommendation, Public Works and Transportation, Fire, and Police. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of Scenario 1. And I can try to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Cox?
On the Scenario 2, did you make all the changes that you wanted to see at Apex Barbecue and Kelly and South Salem and 540 and Holland Road to make it, besides the, not recommending grade separations, but was everything else the way you want in Scenario 2?
So we evaluated the request of the applicant, which is what we're showing. I do think that if that scenario moves forward, we need to look at what else would need to change in the area. And I don't have data right now for that. And that would be outside of the traffic impact analysis, which is what we'll talk about in the next item. But, so, we're not recommending this scenario, so it's hard to answer your question.
Any other questions?
In terms of traffic flow, are you concerned about there being underestimates of traffic?
As far as the regional travel demand model, yes. It's hard when that's one of the tools that we rely on, and it has substantial limitations. That's something that can't just be updated in a piece when we look at one area, because it affects the whole region. So that won't be updated until we do the next Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is underway now. But it's something that we'll have to continue to improve over time. There's a lot that goes into that model, including what other jurisdictions allow as far as density limits. So some- So, some have really high-density limits, and then they kind of grab the potential future population. So, yeah, it's not a perfect tool, but we work with it the best we can.
Is staff significantly concerned about the traffic impact?
So, I think we can get into the traffic impact of this particular project with the next item, if that's okay with you.
All right, any other questions?
And I can come back up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so the next item is rezoning 20 CZ01 Depot 499 PUD, which is located there in the quadrant of 540 and Old US-1 and Apex Barbecue. As you can see, the site is mostly wooded, with the exception of some cleared areas in the northern part of the site. And there are two streams that bisect the property, generally here and here. The property is currently zoned residential agricultural, and the parcel on the corner is currently zoned neighborhood business conditional zoning. It was rezoned in 2009. The surrounding zoning is predominantly RA as well, although we do have high-density single-family conditional zoning at Woodall Estates, and also where the St. Mary Magdalene Church and School was located, in this location, and medium-density residential across Apex Barbecue Road. The proposed zoning is planned unit development conditional zoning. The 2045 Land Use Map designates the majority of this site, 171 acres approximately, as mixed-use high-density residential, office employment, and commercial services. The remainder of the site is designated as medium-high-density residential, office employment, and office employment commercial services. The applicant is requesting a Land Use Map Amendment for the 5.41 acres that's currently designated as office employment, and the proposal is to change that to high-density residential. With the approval of the Land Use Map Amendment, the rezoning as proposed would be consistent with the Land Use Map designation. The applicant did hold two neighborhood meetings for this rezoning, one in December and the other in January, and you have those neighborhood meeting reports. So I'll just explain briefly the layout plan for the PUD and the different colors and uses that generally are allowed in each area. The light-green areas are the perimeter buffers and riparian buffers, areas that will generally be designated as RCA, Resource Conservation Area. The darker-green areas that are throughout the development are proposed as active recreation and open-space area, pocket parks. The yellow areas are proposed for single-family or townhome uses, but there is a cap on the number of single-family units at 50. The orange areas are multifamily. This area east of the minor collector here is striped for either townhomes or apartments. The red areas are non-residential, and these purple pods are the mixed-use pods. And the area in blue here in land use Scenario One is designated as non-residential or school. And you'll notice there is a land use option too, which I'll reference the differences there in a moment. As I mentioned, generally speaking, in the, in the yellow areas, the uses are generally speaking townhomes, and the PUD proposes a maximum of 650 townhomes in those, throughout those pods. In the orange areas, the multifamily, there would be a maximum of 850 multifamily units. The non-residential areas in red allow a variety of office and retail commercial uses. The pods R, S, and T, so this portion that's located adjacent to the ramp, in both scenarios, allow for all the retail and office uses too, but that is where any civic or institutional-type uses are restricted to being allowed. So, uses such as church or place of worship, school, public or private, assembly hall, government services, those uses are examples. Nursing homes would be restricted to that area so that the core of the development would remain with office and retail and active commercial uses. The mixed-use areas allow for uses similar to the non-residential, non-residential uses. There are two use standards, several use standards, but two that I will point out. For drive-through facilities, any drive-through facility must be located within a multi-tenant building. No freestanding drive-through facility shall be allowed. And then for the use bar or nightclub, wine bar or taproom, there are hours of operation limits that are being offered. Sunday through Thursday shall close by 12:00 a.m., and Friday and Saturday shall close by 2:00 a.m. I would like to point out that in land use Option One, even though schools is designated, there is no guarantee that a private or a public school will be located in either of those pods, but that is one scenario, that if a, if a school, the applicant has been working with Wake County Public Schools, if a public school is going to go there, then you'll notice the road network is different. This is the location where the use would be. If the school does not locate here, then the road network changes to bring this major collector around, but then change to that minor collector here. So, it's just a slight change in the, in the road network, the difference being roundabout in this scenario and no roundabout in this scenario. The applicant is, has offered an affordable housing zoning condition. Wake County Public Schools, if they acquire land, has expressed an interest in pursuing affordable housing on any surplus property that they might have. And affordable housing is proposed to be allowed in any of the development pods within the PUD. If no affordable housing projects containing at least 45 units have been approved by January 1, 2025, and the town has a fund, then the developer, a fund for affordable housing, the developer will contribute $300,000 to this fund. This contribution represents the approximate value of a two-acre dedication at market value. And if the town does not have a fund established by that time, then the proposal is to offer that donation to a nonprofit affordable housing provider. And they have defined affordable housing as housing that on average is affordable to a household with an annual income that is no greater than 60% of the area median income for the respectively-sized household in the Raleigh MSA. And this, this condition was amended after the Planning Board meeting, and staff does believe that it meets the intent of staff's request for a condition related to affordable housing that we've been working with them from the beginning. So to address building height throughout the development, in the mixed-use pods here at the gateway to the development along South Salem Street, the minimum height is three stories. Initially, staff had been requesting three stories, but the applicant had only committed to two stories. After Planning Board, they did increase that minimum building height to three stories, with the condition that rooftop terraces that include a minimum of 1,500 square feet of enclosed space for event amenity or other use, such as bar or restaurant, shall qualify as a third floor, and staff is satisfied with that condition. Within the non-residential, the maximum height in the mixed-use area is 80 feet. Within the non-residential areas, the minimum height is one story with a maximum of 100 feet. Within the residential areas that are generally townhomes, the maximum height is 45 feet. They have added a condition that in Pod G, in this location, there's a 30-foot buffer that's proposed along here, that that buffer width would increase to 50 feet if the dwellings are more than two stories. For apartments, there are both minimum and maximum building heights. Along South Salem Street, the minimum height, along both frontages, excuse me, the minimum building height is four stories, and a maximum of 25% of the buildings may be three stories. The maximum building height along South Salem Street, there's, down here, the maximum building height here would be six stories or 90 feet, and along Apex Barbecue, the same maximum height, except the first row of buildings along Apex Barbecue would be limited to no more than four stories. So speaking more about buffers, you have a table in your staff report that compares the requirements, the UDO requirements, and what's proposed in the PUD. Along the north, there's a 100-foot riparian buffer, so we have a natural buffer that's provided along the north. A 30-foot Type A buffer is proposed along Woodall Estates. Along 540, we have 100-foot Type A buffer until you get to Pods R and S, and the proposal there is a 50-foot Type A buffer. And then along Apex Barbecue and South Salem Street furnaces, there is a streetscape buffer that is proposed, 15 feet along South Salem and 30 feet along Apex Barbecue. And this is modeled after the pedestrian-oriented streetscape buffer that we see allowed within the Apex Peakway. So it's a more urban-style buffer that allows for hardscaping and benches and lighting and street trees of that nature to provide a more pedestrian-welcoming experience. The architectural standards that are proposed are comparable to what we typically see. There are front-loaded and alley-loaded townhomes that are proposed. And I'll show you, there's the multifamily elevations, and we do have a minimum standard for affordable housing elevation as well. There are architectural standards for non-residential as well that, with the goal of, I turned the page too soon. Basically, the intent is to, the building should be arranged, defined, create, and activate edges and public spaces, really situated to create more of that urban-style mixed-use development than your typical suburban pattern. There are two locations identified for potential locations for public art, and a minimum of one location will be implemented. Generally speaking, parking will be in compliance with the UDO, but there is a proposal to allow a reduction of up to 15% in the number of required parking spaces, if that's greater than what's already allowed by the UDO. There are certain standards that have to be addressed in the UDO. Generally speaking, landscaping will comply with the requirements of the UDO, but there is a proposal to allow street trees that are provided along certain streets to count as, to allow building plantings that are required for townhomes and single-family to be placed within the right-of-way, and not just within common areas. The RCA for this, for this project, the minimum requirement is 20% or 40.16 acres, and the minimum amount of RCA is proposed for this development. In addition, the applicant is proposing to donate $10,000 to a local nonprofit organization with a mission towards tree preservation and tree replacement, and they've based that value off of what they estimate being able to replant from what they need to remove to construct the development. The stormwater and water and sewer proposal will meet requirements of the UDO. There will be at least two bus stops provided with the amenities required. And just to point out the walkability features, there, five-foot wide sidewalk will be required along all streets within the PUD, except where there is side path along the collector street, that's north-south collector street. A greenway connection will be provided to Scotts Ridge Elementary with approval of Wake County Public School System. And there's side path along both South Salem Streets, the 10-foot side path, and Apex Barbecue Road. And the applicant has committed to constructing off-site side path in gaps that exist here along South Salem Street and here along Apex Barbecue Road, or paying a fee in lieu if they're not able to construct. Getting into transportation. It's a big project. So Shannon generally pointed out with the transportation plan amendments where, what the applicant is proposing, that we have a minor collector street connecting with full movement access to Apex Barbecue in this location, extending the major collector out of Woodall Estates down through the site, and they are proposing full movement access in this location at the mixed-use pods, as well as in this location, with right-in, right-out, left-over access only at this location here and here. Generally speaking, all of the transportation improvements that staff requested after review of the TIA have been provided by the applicant, with three exceptions that have been noted in bold in your staff report. And to review those, those include a 200-foot westbound right-turn lane on Apex Barbecue at Kelly Road, a 200-foot eastbound right-turn lane on Apex Barbecue Road at Kelly Road, a 50-foot westbound right-turn lane on Apex Barbecue Road at Townside Drive, and a condition to install a traffic signal once warranted and permitted by NC DOT at Apex Barbecue and Townside Drive. If not warranted in Phase Two, the developer would pay a fee in lieu for the estimated design and construction cost. And if not permitted by NC DOT, upon buildout of Phase Two, the developer would be released from that requirement. So, just, there are two phases that the traffic improvements were broken down into. Phase One is comprised of no more than 450 townhomes or single-family, 400 apartment units, and 150 square feet of commercial development. Phase Two is a total of 600 townhomes, 600 apartment dwellings, and 300 square feet of commercial development. So, all the Phase Two requirements would have to be in place before those thresholds could be exceeded. If a school is proposed, then a revision to the TIA will have to occur, because that use was not analyzed in the original TIA.
Excuse me, Ms. Cox, could you repeat the Phase One and Phase Two one more time, please?
Yes, so Phase One, and you can see this is in the PUD, 450 single-family or townhomes, 400 apartments, and 150,000 square feet of commercial development. And then Phase Two would be a total of 600 single-family and townhomes, 600 apartments, and 300,000 square feet of commercial development. And then there would still be more left for buildout, but all the improvements would have to be in place before buildout, before, by the time Phase Two was complete. Anything additional above Phase Two, sorry. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission recommended a fee in lieu, as this property is not within a land acquisition area, it's close to Pleasant Park, and there are no greenways shown within the property. Planning staff can recommend approval of the Land Use Map, the 2045 Land Use Map Amendment. However, planning staff cannot recommend approval of the rezoning unless the following changes are made. The transportation plan amendments, staff does not support the proposed amendments to eliminate the two grade-separated crossings. If the Town Council approves the amendments to the thoroughfare and collector street map to remove those two crossings, or if the applicant agrees to amend the plan to include them, this reasoning for denial becomes moot. And then transportation improvements. Transportation engineering staff have suggested the amendments that I read out to you and have not been included by the applicant. The Planning Board heard this item on July 13th and unanimously recommended denial of the Land Use Map Amendment and the rezoning. Without the Land Use Map Amendment, staff, the rezoning's not consistent with the 2045 Land Use Map, and we believe the rezoning is not reasonable in the Land Use Map, and we believe the rezoning is not reasonable in the public interest for the reasons just stated, transportation improvements, and the transportation plan amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Part of the transportation presentation we saw on transportation amendment, there was a, I don't know what you call it, a mock-up, a diagram showing what the bridge over South Salem Street would look like, and the amount of land required both east and the west of Salem Street. Do you know the picture I'm referring to?
That is in the applicant's presentation.
Yes. My question to you was, I mean, have you seen it? And if you do see it, do you take issue with that presentation? Or do you think that's an accurate representation of what an eventual crossing would look like?
That is one option of what a crossing could look like, but it's not necessarily the only option. And, I mean, I can defer to Russell to answer any other questions about that proposed design.
Is it the same one?
It's the image that I believe you're referring, that the applicant showed at planning board, showing what the...
Yeah, it's also in one of the attachments to the transportation presentation earlier.
Okay, good. And then the attachment that they provided for their transportation plan amendment request.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to. I was just wanting to get an opinion on that, or...
You want an awkward opinion? Do you know what he's talking about?
Well, as Shannon mentioned, as long as it's based on what the work that was done for the Southwest Area Study, there was a consultant that looked at both the grade separations and provided concepts for those. So if it's accurate according to that, then that's the best information we have currently.
So I think, just to add to that, the alignment, we don't have an issue with what they were showing. I think what Amanda is getting to is there are other ways to design a crossing and different treatments, and that that's something that would have to be considered once you get much further into the design process. So, but I believe that they will show that as well in their presentation.
Can you speak to the staff's TIA versus your interpretation? And is there, is there a negotiation that happens where you look at all those ones that were kind of the local improvements and ranking them in importance? And do you ever speak to the applicant and say, oh, well, they say it's, something is wrong with that analysis, and that's why, that's part of the denial? Or how's that work exactly?
I'd say out of our review of the traffic impact analysis, I suppose there are two major issues, or two major areas. One of those areas was the 540 Bridge. In our analysis, we actually recommended a second southbound through lane across the 540 Bridge on Salem Street, which would require widening the bridge over 540. That was a big concern for the applicant. In our discussions with the applicant and with NC DOT and looking at their recommendations, we offered an alternative, which instead of widening the bridge over 540, they would provide an additional northbound lane on South Salem Street to complete the four-lane section. So us, so the town and DOT agreed on a second southbound lane on South Salem across their frontage, but DOT had the additional lane northbound as well, where we did not. We wanted the lane carried across the bridge. So that was part of a negotiation there. The applicant agreed to that, so we have that alternative in your packet. So to give you an idea, we like the idea of going ahead and building out the four-lane section on Salem Street from 540 up to Apex Barbecue as far as their Phase Two threshold. I think it's a good thing to do, but of course, there'll be concerns longer term. I mean, by the time of their buildout, we're seeing capacity issues with the bridge over 540. So we're hoping soon after that, that will start to get prioritized to be widened by DOT in the future. There's no certainty on that, of course, but, you know, that's one of, that's one of the major issues. The other one dealt with Apex Barbecue Road, where we originally had the TIA present an analysis showing background traffic as well as background improvements from West Village Phase Two. So the original condition that the applicant had worked up and that we'd provided and the applicant had included in the PUD, included a number of turn lanes associated with what West Village was supposed to do. So the applicant's traffic was put on top of that, and for Phase One, at least Phase One analyzed in the TIA, that seemed to function adequately. But the concern was with the applicant that the way it was worded is if they get to their Phase Two and West Village doesn't move forward, which right now, West Village hasn't moved forward, they had a 2020 buildout, so we don't know what's happening there, the applicant would reanalyze the intersection and come back with additional recommendations. The applicant certainly can speak to that, but I think their concern was about certainty, not wanting to get to that point in their development and have to reanalyze and maybe be tasked with additional improvements they didn't factor in to their development plan. So what they've done is they've proposed in Phase One, eastbound and leftbound, westbound left-turn lanes. They're shorter than the West Village analysis, but also you have to take into account the fact that West Village traffic is, in their assumption, is not going to happen by that point, that they're going to go ahead and do it. So there's a reduction in traffic load that allows for those lanes to be shorter, but they have committed to do those in Phase One. And I've also recommended the additional eastbound right-turn lane because that's where a lot of their traffic is going, up Apex Barbecue Road. That was a lane that was, at least in their Phase Two analysis. So I had a concern that you really wanted that to be provided upfront, because by the time they get to their, the Phase Two that we've identified as a threshold in the PUD, that's a pretty high limit, so there'll be a lot of traffic going that way. So I'd like to go ahead and get a lane installed. So they don't necessarily agree with that, and they can explain why. And then again, in Phase Two, there's the eastbound right-turn lane on Apex Barbecue Road that was also part of the West Village improvements, that again, is trying to add capacity to that intersection. It's something that they can certainly argue. I'm sure they've gone back and done additional analysis beyond the TIA that provides for that recommendation. And then another fairly minor, I guess a minor thing compared to the other two, was the right-turn lane and traffic signal for Townside. Based on our analysis, we think it's, the right-turn lane's warranted based on NC DOT warrants. A signal may or may not be warranted, there are extremely long delays there, there is some development traffic on that movement. There's no eastbound left-turn lane on Apex Barbecue Road at that intersection, nor is anyone planning to do that. So we think the right-turn lane would help to add that capacity, considering it meets warrants, and it's something they should consider doing as part of their Phase Two. As Amanda pointed out in the table, as you'll see, our Phase Two in the PUD is actually more traffic than what was analyzed, or, sorry, the Phase One is actually more development. It's 450 single-family plus townhomes and 400 apartments, so 850 units, versus the 650 multifamily. So maybe a little bit more trip generation associated with that in addition to 150,000 square feet. So our thresholds in the TIA give them a little bit more leeway, put a little bit more traffic load in that first phase than what we would, than what we would consider that was analyzed in the TIA.
Did you mention the westbound right-turn lane, Apex Barbecue?
Yes.
When yours, okay.
Yeah, that was the one where I'd recommended that for Phase One. It was part of their Phase Two, it was part of an additional Phase Two recommendation we had for them in combination with the West Village background traffic and all the West Village improvements. But since all the West Village improvements wouldn't be done, and some of those turn lanes are shorter, we felt like that was an important thing for them to go ahead and do in Phase One. And I guess they could argue they shouldn't have to do it, or they could argue they don't want to do it until Phase Two, which, that's not what they're arguing. But, I mean, they could have a counterargument to that if they want. It's just, we think it should be, they should go ahead and do it in Phase One.
Westbound...
Westbound right.
On Apex Barbecue?
On Apex Barbecue, turning onto Kelly Road.
My reading of it was it wasn't part of the thing at all versus Phase One versus Phase Two, and it had an F in the traffic.
As far as what they're proposing, they are not proposing that lane in Phase One or Phase Two. We're asking them to do it in Phase One.
Would you, with a certain number of feet, would you recommend if it was like a shorter amount, it's something better than nothing, or does it need to be that length according to you guys?
The buildout with all the other West Village improvements, where their traffic in West Village showed 175-foot lane, so, I mean, they could certainly recommend less or explain why they're not recommending it being done at all. But my concern was that some of the other improvements aren't, you know, you don't have as long a left-turn lanes, for instance. So I'm just concerned about congestion at that intersection without all the improvements done by West Village. So, I mean, I don't really have a full picture of the traffic that maybe they're looking at, because it's a different analysis than what was originally assumed in the TIA and the assumptions we made subsequent to that.
And how does the West Village, sorry, I guess, how's the West Village work? Is it indefinitely, like paused, or can, I guess it would have to go back through rezoning again if they are changing anything, or...
When they, when they come back with site plans as part of the already-zoned development, assuming they're not doing a rezoning, we would ask for an updated traffic impact analysis, because they're already beyond their buildout date. It's 2020 now, and they haven't even started their commercial development. So we would ask for them to come back, basically look at updated background conditions, updated buildout date, look at their zoning commitments, and basically tell us, you know, does the picture for the new projected future look the same as what they had projected back then in terms of the improvements they would have to do? And there may be some back-and-forth discussion about that. You know, part of, part of the problem in an area like this, when it comes to traffic impact analysis, is you try to assume background and development, and you try to assume background improvements others have done, but when so many developments are happening at the same time, and some of those developments don't, you're not taking, every development's not taking every intersection into account, so there's traffic that bleeds throughout the network. And some areas, you may project a little bit high, some areas you may project a little bit low, but there's no really good way to know exactly how it's all going to come together. You just have to take a snapshot, like in this case, they assume certain background developments are moving forward, they assume certain improvements are happening as part of those background developments. If they say, well, you know, that's now uncertain, they can take out that traffic and take out, take out those background improvements, which you've got a different analysis at that point. And if that other development comes back in with another buildout date, it may be all the same traffic, but you've got more background traffic from other developments that are going to add on to that. And not all of those may be assigned to do improvements at that one location. So you've got more traffic with maybe the same improvements that you had in earlier analysis that's, that's no longer completely valid for the condition you've got on the ground.
All right, thank you. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Jamie Schwager with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Lennar Carlinas. I'm joined tonight by Stephen Dorn with Lennar, Bob Zawalt with McAdams, Ronald Stevenson with Remy Kemp. I'm going to have to take this down. It's a little, I'm going to be fiddling with it all night. We're thrilled to be here before you tonight with this exciting mixed-use project, which was designated years ago for this very spot. Staff did a great job on their reports, and I'll try not to repeat myself too much, but because we did combine the public hearings, I'd like to ask that we also combine our time into 18 minutes total for our application team. I'll split my time with Mr. Ronald Stevenson, who will address the traffic improvements with the rezoning and with the plan amendment. Thank you. Tonight, we'll cover the key aspects of this mixed-use development, and our traffic engineer, Ronald Stevenson, will cover the remainder. Those key aspects are, we're delivering a mix of office, commercial, residential, and school uses. We'll hit on the walkability topic, trees and sustainability, the Wake County Public Schools Elementary School site, affordable housing contributions, the necessary land use plan amendments, and the transportation improvements, and necessary transportation plan amendments that are really a significant portion of making this investment a reality. And I say necessary because we really do have a necessary decision to make tonight. You have a land use plan that calls for mixed-use, high-density, mix of uses, and you have a transportation plan that's inherently incompatible with us being able to deliver those uses in the way that you envisioned in the 2045 plan. These types of conflicts happen all the time when you're making long-range planning, uses and termination. But what we're asking you to do tonight is to choose to deliver that consistent land use plan vision that your staff supports from your planning department, and to note the, all of the changes and the offers that the town is getting with that project, and to choose scenario two for the transportation plan amendment. To begin with the land use, the town's own guidance sets a very clear picture for what the future land development of this area should be. In your 2045 future land use map, this is designated as Community Mixed-Use Activity Center, which has a mix of high-density residential, an office employment, and commercial services shown in red. And your own plans to find community mixed uses should be anchored by a large commercial use such as a grocery store. Additional retail and commercial services should be oriented on internal network of streets. Office and recreation facilities are also appropriate, and apartments and townhomes in close proximity to retailers for more daily trips to be taken on foot or bike. The area also calls for residential density of up to 14 units per acre and 30 percent of the total area to be non-residential. It also calls for vertical and horizontal mix of uses. And as you might imagine, on a 200-acre site, delivering all those things together with all of the important aspects of the town's intent and how they would like to see development go forward in the future is a tall order. We believe this project has actually delivered that in the master plan. And as Amanda explained, we've oriented the master plan here in different pods and a mix of uses that are detailed heavily in the PUD master plan. But what's important to the layout is what we've done, is we've hit that 30 percent non-residential with a program of 650,000 square feet of non-residential uses, including retail, restaurants, school, and office that are all detailed in your PUD plan. We've also hit the vertical integration with the mixed-use pod shown in purple at the center, main full axis of the site. And we're also delivering the type of residential project, product that your plan calls for, mainly townhomes, 650 townhomes inclusive of up to 50 single-family homes, and then 850 apartments. So the majority of what we're doing, it winds up exactly with the type of residential product that you're calling for and hits that density metric that you all envisioned for this space. It does all of that, including adding open space, pocket parks, trails, and greenways throughout the site that are shown there on the master plan. And what's also significant about the way that we've oriented this is that this team, this development team, has done mixed-use projects throughout the triangle. And what you want to do with a site like this that has great visibility along South Salem and at the corner of 540 is to provide an enclave toward the rear for the townhome and the residential use, which is shown in the yellow on the screen, and then provide a more prominent location for your commercial and mixed-use and vertical integration so that you can get tenants with that high visibility and the access they need to be viable. And that's why this alignment is so important. And the area in the blue at the bottom of your screen is the alternative for the school site that Amanda mentioned. The reason that we have two alternatives in the PUD is that when we came to you at first, we didn't have the whole 200 acres under contract, and we were encouraged to go out and include the full bottom portion into the site. So we designed that as some commercial and an office area. Then the school became an option, and that was added as a second option, but it is our preferred alternative. And Ms. Betty Parker's here to speak a little bit about their preferences as well.
In addition to taking all those objectives into account and delivering the types of residential uses that's envisioned in this plan, the pods are arranged in a way that really promotes walkability in a very holistic way, and took significant measures to make that walkability a priority. As Amanda mentioned, there's five-foot sidewalks along both sides of the street throughout the site, six-foot walking trails throughout the site, 10-foot side paths and sidewalks along the entire site frontage, two roundabouts on the main collector, north and south to slow traffic going into the Woodall neighborhood there. A greenway connection to Scotts Ridge Elementary, construction of off-site sidewalk or side path along South Salem Street in areas that would complete your pedestrian network along the entire area of Apex Barbecue Road and South Salem Street in connection with some town projects that are already going on in that Apex Barbecue area. We've also offered two high-visibility crosswalks on Apex Barbecue and a traffic signal if warranted, which would also have a crosswalk at the Woodall intersection. Throughout the development process, we've heard a lot about trees and sustainability, so we're providing solar PV system on 15 percent of the single-family homes and conduit on all of the homes. We're creating a new canopy by planting street trees in the right-of-way, perimeter buffers, pocket parks, and open spaces, and meeting that 20 percent RCA requirement. In addition, for the residential portion land area, the project is retaining, replacing, or making a donation to replace 100 percent of the existing tree canopy. And that's where that 10 percent came in. We looked at those numbers, we ran the calculations, and the balance that we're not able to either retain or replace for what we're displacing in the residential portion, we've assigned a tree value and came to a $10,000 donation. And to offset the impact of the townhomes and apartments and the significant growth that we recognize this area is undertaking, we are providing the option for the Wake County Public School site, who is now under contract for a potential 750-seat elementary school shown in blue. We think this is really important and a dynamic thing, because you have the opportunity to design in a mixed-use activity center, walkable to two elementary schools in a way that's integrated and provides side paths for those children walking or biking to school from the start. So we really have a great opportunity here to make that walkable. There's a tentative 2026 opening if all goes well and we're able to move forward tonight. This will go forward... tonight, this will go forward to the Board of Education for review, and a decision tonight would help them meet those deadlines. And we compared that with the construction on our townhomes. We had some questions at Planning Board about, would this elementary school just fill up with all of the students that are generated here? So we looked at where we thought we would be in terms of the school opening and our townhome construction. And when we looked at our full build-out for those townhomes, it would be 2028. Based on our construction schedule, we're only anticipating generating about 100 elementary school students. At the time, the school would open in 2026 if it opens that early. And then at full build-out, less than 400 children, at full project build-out, are about 40%. And as I mentioned, Ms. Parker from the school system is here, can answer questions about how they run those calculations. That was based on a metric on our experience of what we think the generation of the school children will be in this area, so certainly not at capacity either when we finish our Phase 1 construction or at full build-out. Affordable housing was also an important metric for the town. We're doing, we're meeting that metric in two ways. Physical commitments to focus on the townhomes and apartments, which are generally more affordable than single-family product, and we're including a variety of six-floor plans for the townhomes that allow us to open with a lower price point, starting in the $200,000. And we ran a metric looking at how many of those would be in that $200,000 price point. We believe it's over half would be in that $200,000. We're also providing a $300,000 contribution to the affordable housing fund, and Amanda covered that well. I think suffice it to say, that also came up at the Planning Board, and we went back and looked at how we'd already originally crafted that and revised it in a way that satisfies the staff's objections. In addition to the changes to affordable housing and the building height that Amanda covered, we're also providing three additional transportation improvements. Rinald will cover that exactly where they are, but I think it's significant to note, that's in addition to the four pages of transportation improvements that we've already committed to in the PUD. Four pages of improvements that this project's going to deliver, not the least of which is building out the full four-lane intersection, or the full four-lane section, excuse me, along Salem Street for the entire frontage of our site. That's a significant investment. The investments themselves total about $6.1 million. And so we have gone through that negotiation process, we have gone back and forth with transportation, and we're at a point where we provided these additional transportation improvements, and we believe that satisfies the impact that we're providing. And while we're on the topic of investment, we thought it was important to make a little clearer to the town what this decision to approve the rezoning and the related plan amendment site means. It means a direct investment of over $14.7 million, including the $6.1 million transportation improvements I just mentioned, the $3.3 million in recreation fees, $5 million estimated residential development fees, and the $300,000 to the affordable housing fund. That's directly invested in the town. But then you also get the indirect investments. You get about a $47 million townhome residential development, $100 million in commercial and office development, $2 million in annual real property tax and revenue, that's just the Apex, town of Apex portion, so not the Wake County, $2 million per year. Over time, that alone can fund many capital improvement projects and take a burden off your existing taxpayer, taxpayers. We estimate we'll produce about 2,000 office, retail, and restaurant jobs plus related development jobs, and then the school would be about $55 million. And with these improvements, the zoning request is reasonable in the public interest, because we meet the intent of each of these major applicable planning and transportation objectives. We're consistent with the 2045 land use map, with the amendment. We've included buffering and roundabouts, walkability, and the transportation plan amendments are necessary to deliver a viable project in the way that your 2045 land use plan envisioned. Our additional transportation improvements recommended by staff are not recommended by DOT, and we've provided the viable affordable housing and significant tree canopy commitments. Amanda, to cover the land use map amendment, and this to summarize the vibrant mixed-use community that you'll be able to achieve by approving the zoning here tonight, and all the metrics that we've been able to meet over this nearly year-long process and meeting with staff. I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Rinald Stevenson, but before I do, I'd just like to note that there are only two amendments in which we were not able to agree with staff. And I urge you to choose, to think about, if you choose Scenario 1 and deny the rezoning, you're rejecting a practical near-term solution to real problems that Apex citizens face today, and making an investment in a future bridge that's not designed, it's not funded, and there's just simply no telling what kind of impact that would have. We urge you to choose the more certain solutions to the problems today that can generate the type of revenue you might need for additional replacement improvements over time.
Good evening. Rinald Stevenson with Remy Kemp and Associates, and sorry, I have trouble talking and breathing in this thing, so. So I'm going to cover the transportation, that's a big topic with this one, with this project, and there's two parts. There's the traffic, transportation commitments that are, you've heard about as part of the rezoning, and then there's the transportation plan amendments that we're going to talk about. So they're not necessarily exclusive of each other, but I'm going to hit the zoning traffic conditions first. As you've heard, staff did a great job of summarizing these. I won't necessarily read them all, just point out the high spots of them. There are lots of turn lanes that are going to be done at the site, driveways and entrances, turn lanes and traffic signals. As you've heard, widening Salem Street to a full four-lane meeting-divided road, which is almost a mile in length along the frontage area. We are doing turn lanes and improvements at Apex Barbecue and Kelly Road, and I'll show you that in a minute. The two bus stops that have been mentioned, and as Jamie mentioned, the total cost, estimated cost is around $6 million or more for the road improvements. And do want to also point out, as Jamie mentioned too, there were some new commitments that were added following the Planning Board meeting, and I'll show you those. They were, and they were specifically at the intersection of Apex Barbecue and Kelly Road, to try to address those concerns. So here is a, just a graphic, this is a small kind of snip of the area of Salem Street, and what I wanted to point out to you here is that you can see the existing lanes here. This is the two-lane road that's there today, railroads to the south, but this is all the new pavement we're adding, this cross-section here. So we're adding not just two through lanes, but a median, we're adding turn lanes, there's going to be bike and pet accommodations there, so it's more than just, if you think about just a simple widening of the road. This is a major undertaking and a major improvement that is, like I said, almost a mile in length. Some of the, some of the specific improvements that have our commitments for the transportation improvements, Apex Barbecue and Kelly Road, as I mentioned, there were some new ones here from the Planning Board that we added. One thing I want to point out here in particular is, we are proposing to add a new through lane on Kelly Road in the northbound direction. That was an improvement, has been talked about, is something that's been identified for the future as part of West Village and this project, so we are proposing to do that. We are proposing to look at, add some turn lanes at the intersection, and I'll talk a little, I'll show you a picture of this in just a moment. And something new that we added since the last meeting was a right turn lane, not in the westbound direction, in the southbound direction by the fire station. And one of the reasons for that is the right-of-way, and that's been set up, it looks like, for that, upon further investigation, been set up to handle that type of improvement, to allow it to be built. Also, we're making improvements at the 540 Salem Street interchange. And as you heard Russell mention earlier, something that is going to be needed at some point, you know, in the future, well into the future, is this potential capacity of the bridge at Salem Street and 540. We're doing everything we can to set that up for that to happen, so just wanted to, want to point that out, and we can look at that a little more too. But additional turn lanes at that interchange, setting that up so that that can be done in the future with minimal additional costs other than just the bridge. So the picture here is just kind of an overall summary of the, where the improvements are. And again, I've got a picture we'll look at at Apex Barbecue and Kelly Road, but just wanted to point out here in this graphic, in the blue is the Kelly Road through lane that I mentioned. You can see some light blue lines there that represent turn lane improvements on Apex Barbecue. You can see over at Apex Barbecue, and this is Apex Barbecue Salem, turn lane improvements, signal improvements there, and some, the through lane widening on Salem Street, along with turn lanes at the interchange ramps. This is a picture, I know my light's yellow, but I think I have more time than this, correct? Okay, okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I hit it twice, so they're 18 minutes when that goes off.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Can I just take another five minutes to make sure we're addressing all of council's questions?
Okay, I'll try to go fast and just be available for questions, I'm sure there'll be some. These are just improvements at Apex Barbecue and Kelly Road, we could talk more about that, but one thing I do want to point out here, the reason those turn lanes, right turn lanes were not in, is you can see, this is westbound Apex Barbecue Road. And the reason, you can see these homes here, and that's the reason that adding the right turn lane out here really starts to encroach up into that home. And so that's the reason that has not been proposed at this point by this development. And we could come back to this if we need to. So really quickly, the transportation plan amendments is kind of the next focus in these two bridges and roads. And here they are, this may be the graphic that somebody asked about earlier, at least this one version of it, but this green area represents the area that would, that would take to sort of get back down to the existing ground from this bridge. And you can see it's a big, it is a big area there, and then also the crossing over 540 in this area. So the, one of the things we looked at, you've heard about the traffic volumes, the traffic volumes in the future just don't really support the need, the absolute need to do this. I think, I agree that the models may not be exactly correct, but it would have to be off by a huge factor in order to really show this as an absolute, you know, must-have for the next 25 years. So, but one of the things it does is impacts the developable property here, and you can see this green area is about 10 acres, and it really impacts this S and R parcel here because of that. At the Planning Board, somebody brought up the idea of a wall, can't you do a wall to minimize that? And you can, so this is a, this is a graphic from a slightly different perspective that shows a wall there. But one thing I did want to point out is that, of course, this bridge is still really high up in the air, but you still can't really get access over here. This is, this is a big wall, and so you can't really get access to these properties anyway, even if it is a wall, so it's, it still has a big impact. May not be horizontally, but vertically is a big impact. The, this is a, this is a shot looking at this, at this potential bridge from Salem Street, and you can see how big it is, and one of the reasons over here is the train. And you can see the train tracks sit up above, it's about 10 or 12 feet above Salem Street in this area. And so this bridge has got to be really tall in order to get over the train tracks and the roads, that's about 40 feet there. You can see utility pole here, just for reference, and the truck, so it's pretty, a huge bridge. Another view of it from, this is put on top of the bridge or above looking at it, and I just wanted to point out, this is a single-story, you know, kind of residential sort of dwelling here, shown for reference. And you can see this wall just towers over that, over that, over that single-story residence there, 40 to 50, 60 feet in the air, you know, back as you get into the site there. There are a number of crossings, you heard staff talk about it, we, this is just a map showing the crossings of the railroad in this area, and it's sort of about, all the way up from Tingen, Apex Peakway up in that area, there's about five miles, you know, down here, there are eight crossings, so there's, you can see them located here. This includes the Apex Peakway crossing that I know is underway, hopefully will be completed in the future. That's sort of a look at the Salem Street Bridge and that particular road, and the impacts it would have, so kind of moving over, switching over to the 540 crossing. You can see the 540 crossing here in red, and again, looking at the same kind of thing, there are nine total crossings of 540 in about six miles, so that's almost three-quarters of a mile. There is a crossing of 540, and many of those already have multiple lanes, like four lanes with a, with a median, so. And I took a quick look at it, there's, there is capacity on these roads for the future to handle these crossings of 540.
You can close out in one minute, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir, sure will. So this is again, just a quick picture, this goes into the site here where the bridge would land, has an impact there on the, on the development, and where that would land, it would really go right through there. One key thing here with these, with Scenario 2 that I do want to point out, one of the reasons these traffic volumes are low in this model, I think, is the fact that it doesn't, especially this crossing here over 540, doesn't really lead into really high-density areas. This is Holland Road, and you can see Holland just circles right back down to Salem Street on this side, so if you cross over, this feeds right back down into Salem Street, which is already an interchange and crossing there. So a similar thing on the other side, is connectivity to crossings to get over and to these roads. The higher-density stuff wants to be off of Salem Street here with our commercial project here, West Village here, and the reason is, they want to be near an interchange.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll be available for questions.
Any questions?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. I learned at the Planning Board, I cannot read and mask. I am a great fog producer, so I apologize and mean no disrespect by that. I'm Betty Parker, Senior Director of Real Estate Services for the Wake County Board of Education, and it's so nice to be with you this evening. I wanted to bring up a few key points, I realize the lateness of the hour, so I'm going to go as quickly as I can. The Board of Education has an elementary site on Pods RNS in the plan as you've seen it. That site is a bit limited by two environmental features, a stream that crosses at the north and a stream that crosses in the middle. So what lies between those streams is the buildable area, smaller than we typically have, but yet our concept planning indicates we can put a full-size elementary school there. There's a segment south of that environmental where we really can't put an elementary school function because of the lack of adjacencies, but we have other needs, like a pre-K center that we've already began scoping out for a need in this area. So there's some other school system needs where we can utilize the full piece, but the one thing that will not work, because that site is so tight, the urban guidelines in this PUD help us get a school there, but if it's segmented by that grade separation and a north-south orientation, it renders the site not viable for a school. It's just that simple. We are as tight as we can be in that area. Let me see. We certainly have a great deal of respect for staff, their input and collaboration has been incredible, we understand your long-range planning and your transportation needs, that's what makes Apex as prolific in its growth as it is. So while we understand that, unfortunately for us, it's black and white, it's a school or a road in that aspect. This assemblage is under contract, the Board of Education is in its due diligence phase, so if this is approved tonight with the, without the grade separation, we'll be in a position to go to the Board of Commissioners for funding approval, which is our last step in September. There's funding set up in our capital improvement program to begin design next year with construction that will complete in 2025. If, we have looked hard and long for school sites in this area, there's still a future site in the west that we need to acquire, but to give credit where credit is due, if it weren't for Amanda Buntz and Diane Ken and Lennar, we wouldn't be here on this site. I cannot underscore enough the collaboration that the community has, has given to us to help us meet the crowding demands that you have in this area. To speak to that just a bit, the Planning Board raised some concerns about crowding and capacity, so I brought a little more detail back for you. I think we all know Olive Chapel and Scotts Ridge are currently capped. Per our 1920 for city utilization report, crowding in the nearest five schools to this site are overcrowded by already almost 1,000 students. We've already had to add 42 mobile and modular classrooms to reduce overcrowding, but we're still, on average, over 100% crowded. This is not the only school to consider when we're talking about how we're addressing crowding. We are in the process of finalizing acquisition of some properties to go along with our Apex Friendship Elementary School, will be back soon, remember us fondly. But that school is going to bring about 736 seats in capacity. It opens in 2022, so just two years from now, we'll have an additional shot of capacity in the west. And when that happens, it's going to have a beneficial impact on the school assignment areas for both Olive Chapel and Scotts Ridge. impact on the school assignment areas for both Olive Chapel and Scotts Ridge. With its placement, what's in those two assignment plans today are going to adjust to fill the new school. So, in two years, some relief will be coming. Woods Creek Elementary is planned, uh, that's in Holly Springs, just south of US One, just west of the Twelve Oaks community. Um, it will be planned to open in 2025, but from Apex's perspective, it's the swing space for our major renovation of Baucham Elementary. So, Baucham will receive a refresh. Whether or not there's additional capacity is yet to be seen, because that isn't designed yet, but it will, it will bring Baucham up to current educational standards and provide a more equitable school experience there. So, Woods Creek, again, is going to have some beneficial impact on the Oakview Elementary and Holly Springs, as well as Scotts Ridge's assignment area. So, that's a second impact. And then if this opens, uh, on this site in 2025, it'll have the potential to provide beneficial impacts to not only Olive Chapel, but Scotts Ridge, Salem, Baucham, and El, and, uh, Apex Elementary. So, by planting a new school here, it carves some assignment off of the others. We did pay a whole lot of attention, uh, to Lenar's numbers on how their phase to build out is planned, uh, and they're correct. We have looked at, uh, their seats, uh, that are, that are going to be needed from that neighborhood. We've contacted, um, since the planning board, our, our consultants with OREAD Ittery and with Numerex, who are the folks that help us not only with student assignment, but long-range planning needs. They've confirmed that the generation of students in this particular neighborhood will probably generate at most sixty percent of the school's planned capacity. So, an additional forty percent is going to be available outside this neighborhood. And with some of the domino effects you see of other schools opening, there should be more room generated. Now, that's not to say all your other developments won't come right behind us, uh, but, but we have three coming up fairly quickly that we think will be beneficial. I wanted to speak just once quickly to sort of our area investments. Um, I checked this morning. In the last fifteen years, your population's doubled, completely doubled. In the last fifteen years, there's been explosive growth in Western Wake, which is attributable primarily to two things. The West Wake, uh, regional wastewater plant that the four towns along the western corridor support it, and I-540 and 55 improvements. And, and explosive growth has just shot up that. In fifteen years, we've built 2.4 million square feet of brick-and-mortar schools with fifteen thousand five hundred seats, and that's without counting mobiles and modulators. And we're already that crowded. Of that, about a million square feet of brick-and-mortar school space and more than forty-one hundred seats are in Apex. So, a, a fairly considerable chunk of the total is in the town of Apex. In the next five years, we have plans to build 1.3 million square feet in Apex with sixty-four hundred seats in that western corridor. I'm sorry. Um, 1.3 million square feet in the western corridor, five hundred and two million dollars, all addressing this, this rampant growth that's happening. Of that, we've got a hundred and thirty-three million dollars earmarked for three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square feet of brick-and-mortar schools, just in this elementary school at fifty-one million, the Apex Friendship Elementary, and the Baucham major renovation. So, um, this to say, um, we're making significant investments. We understand crowding's an issue, and we are absolutely doing the best that we can, given the constraints. Um, there is still a need for a, a site in Western Apex. I will be back to see Diane soon, uh, to see if she can get out her metal detector and help me find another needle in a haystack. Um, in quick closing, I just wanted to strike a couple, uh, quick notes. The opportunity for this to be integrated in a neighborhood from day one, with the sort of affordable housing and pricing variations it has, mixed-use opportunities and walkability, is fabulous for a school site, for student health, for the environment, for reduction in buses. We think it's fabulous, and we're plan, we're very proud to be part of it. Um, I wanted to underscore the collaboration that goes on between us and town staff nearly constantly, probably more than they would like, uh, but, but we all have worked very well together, as well as with the development community. In terms of affordable housing, the school board recently has taken part in some affordable housing projects, uh, through collaboration with City of Raleigh for one, at Southeast Raleigh Elementary School, and more recently to explore one with the town of Cary. Uh, while that's beyond our, uh, state mandated role, where we are able to participate in that is if we plan this site and have surplus property we don't need, uh, by statute, it goes to the Board of Commissioners to decide if they have an interest in it. They have established a rubric for any surplus property to first scrutinize closely for potential for affordable housing. So, as we go through this planning, if there's an opportunity for that, uh, down in the southern area where we envision a pre-K center, it's something that we'll be happy to collaborate and explore and let the Board of Education consider as well. Um, lastly, we can't build this school without your help. It's, it's a one or the other, and I'm sorry to put you in that position. Um, but with all due respect, we would request your support and approval of this zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, that are in my area or not broader.
Ms. Parker, did you say it's possible you could fit a school, a pre-K center, and still have some surplus for affordable housing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Parker, um, you also, you've mentioned, um, the K, um, the pre-K center and other. So, would other be things like, I don't know, um, opportunities for school health, like a school-based health center, or pantries, or anything like that? When you say other, are those opportunities potentially?
We have a program called the Space Needs Analysis and Prioritization Program that's managed by a different group, not by me, in which we look for some of these alternative, alternative needs and space needs that we have that aren't pure classroom or pure office. And a pre-K center is one of those. We already work with, uh, several areas with food pantries in some of our schools. That's certainly something that could be considered as this school gets off the ground. Um, we have talked about some ready-to-learn centers and health centers in other locations. None have come to fruition lately, but there's an opportunity to put that need on the list, if you will, and have staff evaluate it and prioritize it. The pre-K center is one of those needs that's been prioritized, and they've done some data checking to find out where the optimum locations are throughout the county to meet those needs, and Apex is one of those top identified locations. So, anytime we have a chance to acquire property for a school, if there's additional acreage, we want to use it maximally. We don't want to waste the taxpayer money with land we can't use or, or streams we can't cross or that sort of thing. But here, um, these environmental buffers help offset the fact that the highway is right next door, and it gives a little bit better setting for a more walkable urban community. And to be able to pair that with a pre-K center and other uses, uh, I, I think we're open to challenging our designers to a number of needs. Uh, I don't think any have been specifically identified beyond a pre-K at this point.
Thank you.
I hope that helps.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Parker. Okay, so you were, you guys are, we're not open a public hearing just yet. I want to make sure I, I'm proper in doing this. Is there a way we can take a ten-minute recess, or do we need to let them go now?
If you want to take a ten-minute recess, you can.
Okay, if you could, just give us, yeah, just courage, give us a ten-minute recess, and then we'll pick back up. All right? So, thank you very much. We'll be back in ten minutes.
Thank you.
No, that, no, that was, um, that was town.
Oh, what?
Oh, you saw me?
Yeah, I thought that was work.
No, that was, um, that was seventeen about June 20.
Oh, all right. I'll, I'll give you a pass. We, we won't charge the Justice Center rent then for the parking lot. I thought, because you said you were working on this multi-state thing.
I know, I know.
She had to run out there and do that in order to come back in here.
But that would be something that you would expect me to have to do.
That would fit with your MO.
I know, so that's...
You know, it's a delay, so you know, I don't think I've ever talked immediately, maybe one time this time, maybe twice.
What's the short?
Oh, June 20 celebration, so, yeah. Looks nice. So, um, and I think, and I said, I gotta wear red because that's a Juneteenth color. So, I wore it. So, I just like, take it and would just put it on, you know. And I think, what did the, because these are pretty...
I wanted him to do is go away, not being able to talk.
Right, or just feeling like, doing something.
Yeah, I'm glad we had the break.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would air shake your hand if I could. I want to thank you for talking to me and helping me talk to your folks. I appreciate it.
I tell you what, you made a lot of folks happy.
It's the right thing to do. We wouldn't have known if you hadn't made it. So, thank you for sitting up. I don't, I don't know what I don't know, so any help is all.
No, it was very important. It's personal. It's just, that's a great thing.
It's exciting about...
I thought I was like, I didn't know that name from, so now it's just all come together.
That's fine. I don't, I don't look like I said it all right.
Thank you for coming.
I mean, it's so many questions.
Yeah, there's a good security camera on the right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I wasn't sure what college for or why.
Okay.
What's the other thing?
Okay.
I just put, well, we're not changing anything right yet.
Shoot, man, that was close.
It's still good.
What's the hottest thing, right?
I know you just...
Don't call her, no, don't feel like saying that.
But are you tired? You just have your eyes.
I'm good, I'm good.
Exactly.
They say like, you get tired, go to bed early.
Yeah.
I know.
I feel like, you know, it's a, it's a...
There's two recorded cameras.
I know.
Okay.
Hey, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
It sucks to be in traffic.
I have the top one.
Here you go.
There.
I had a couple of questions. I'll hint that I missed my chance, so I'm going to try to, maybe after, after I'll hold hearing, I may go back.
Okay, I'll get them.
Just, just let you know that.
Yeah, okay.
I missed my chance. I was getting tired, and then I, I lost it.
Just queue me up.
Oh, thank you.
So, can I ask you a question on this one, if you'd like?
Or you want to go ask, are you going to talk to him now? Were you, were you saying you were going to talk to him now?
No, during, I've already talked to him in the past, during the, after poll hearing.
Well, I live...
Oh, when I made an appointment, I, there was a plan, 2004 plan, we worked together. And I bought my house, I saw that plan, and I was just like, that'll be nice. It was much easier, it was even more ambitious than this is. And, you know, I bought my house in 2009, so I think the, the bridge thing will derail anything comes there to the estate for a long time. So, um, the way it's in the state, I think that area will, my neighbor's going to be, they're going to be able to do lots of stuff. We're helping out there by two thousand. When I bought my house, I saw that plan and I was just like, that'll be nice. It was much easier, it was even more ambitious than this is. And, you know, I bought my house in 2009. So I think the bridge thing will derail when anything comes to the estate for a long time. So, um, the way it's in the state, I think that area will, my neighborhood's gonna be kind of reveal lots of stuff. We're hoping after, by 2000.
Get back in session here and pick up where we left off. Everybody ready? All right, what I'll let you do right now is open up public hearing for, um, public hearing number three. So the first person I'll call up is Emmett Haywood. Want to do both of them? Okay. All right, so we'll open both three and four. And we do have a crossover as well. Okay, so we'll deal with that. But the floor is yours.
Good evening. I am Emmett Haywood, an attorney in Raleigh. With me this evening is Ms. Pam Utley, who owns 1.35 acres located at 1420 South Salem Street. If you look on the map, the colorful map, she owns the 1.35 acres just below the little stub road that DOT has constructed, right above the, she's part of the blue. She and her extended family live on the property. Ms. Utley has lived on the property for 50 years. She takes care of a number of family members, including a special needs granddaughter, who sometimes wanders. She worries about the dangers posed to her granddaughter from the increased traffic. When the Wake County Board of Education approached her about selling her property to a new school, she agreed. Also with me tonight is Ms. Utley's next door neighbor and friend, Mr. Kerry Hunter. Mr. Hunter's property address is 1525 South Salem Street. His property is located on both the east and west sides of South Salem Street. The property is one tax parcel and consists now of about 15 acres on the east, what was the old home place side of South Salem Street, and about 31 acres on the west side of South Salem Street. Mr. Hunter's family has owned this property since the 1700s. The original Hunter home was built around 1790. That's right, Kerry, isn't it? Mr. Hunter and his family lived on the farm, lived on the land, farmed it continuously until 2010, when the DOT took a large portion of the property and cut off most of the access to what was left. Before the taking for the outer loop, I-540, the property was about 74 acres, 41 acres on the west side, and 34 acres on the east homeside, side of the property. They also took, on the east side, Mr. Hunter's family home and his family cemetery. Both he and the graves had to be relocated. Not the same place, but. After the DOT takings, Mr. Hunter is really just left with about 31 acres on the west side of South Salem Street. The 15 acres on the east side of South Salem Street, where his home used to be, are landlocked. The DOT can landlock you, and they have landlocked, cut off all of his access. When the school board approached Mr. Hunter about selling a portion of his property, of his remaining 31 accessible acres on the west side, he agreed. He put approximately 23 acres of his land under contract to the school board. The remaining eight acres just to the north of the blue, and his property is most of the blue area, not all of it, there's about eight acres north of the blue acre, north of the blue area that was not put under contract with the school. Ms. Utley and Mr. Hunter respectfully ask that this proposed grade separation rail bridge over South Salem Street be deleted from the transportation plan and the rezoning be approved, allowing non-residential uses on their properties, including uses of school. This proposed grade separation bridge over the railroad tracks in South Salem Street will ruin both Mr. Hunter's and Ms. Utley's property. It will ruin it. The school representatives have said that the school and the road both won't fit on the property. They just don't work together. The rail bridge will be 40 or 50 feet in the air, and the property that Mr. Hunter owns will be even further cut up, lost and landlocked, and in the shadow of this really mammoth road. This bridge, this grade separation is going to be extremely expensive to build. I understand, and there was testimony earlier, that it was going to be $20 million just for that one bridge. And there's no funding for this. It's really highly unlikely that it's ever going to be built. As y'all might know, DOT doesn't have any money right now, and it has more important priorities than this grade separation. Does the town have the funds to build this bridge and road, this grade separation? I don't think the town has yet completed the peakway, which maybe is a higher priority. I don't know.
I hate to cut you off, but your time is up. I gave you extra time.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just remind you of the Constitution.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Doug Poe. You would state your name and address, please.
My name is Doug Poe. I live at 1216 South Salem Street, and I've got a choice to make. I can either stop breathing so I don't fog up my glasses or take this thing off while I'm talking. So, thank you. My preferred choice. I live in this area. As a matter of fact, the farm that I live on for three generations, and raised the fourth one there, but they left, was, is about 150 acres of the 200 acre total that we're talking about here on this. I, my brother and I, who's here tonight and I'm speaking for as well, both still live on that farm. He lives on Barbecue Road and I live on Salem Street. One really quick, interesting tidbit, my grandfather bought that farm about 1930 or somewhere in that area. And they wanted to come to Apex because of the reputation for the school system. My mother was getting ready to start school, and that was one of the reasons that they chose Apex. I think it's amazing that 90 years later, Apex still has that reputation for the school system. And I thought that was pretty, pretty neat, because I've heard that many times over the years, that that's one of the reasons that they, they came here. Growing up in Apex, I had the opportunity to go downtown Apex with my mom and grandmother about every Saturday. We, we came in from a mile down the road to the grocery shop, and mother and grandma would shop at all the other places that they need to. My first stop was always Piggams Pharmacy, where I could get me a fountain drink and crushed ice, and occasionally an ice cream float, but mother didn't allow that very often. But when we came downtown, that was the only business district. That was Apex. There was no other businesses in Apex anywhere at that point in time. But that was okay, because everything, everybody in the area needed was presented right there. There was grocery stores, Benton's Grocery Store and Apex Grocery. There were hardware stores, Hinton's Hardware. There was clothing, Bennett's and Poe, Poe Brothers General Merchandise Store, which they, and a lot of these stores, Martin's and several of these stores, they had many, many varied items, because they, that downtown area met the need at that time. There was also Thelma's Dress Shop, not one of my places, favorite places to hang out with mother. But right next door was the Five and Ten, and sometimes she'd let me go there while she went to Thelma's. But anyway, Apex has grown a lot. It has changed a lot. There was also a Ford dealership and a Chevy dealership down south. I had my first car from Helmut Ford, which is now Crossroads, which is now back in Apex. I'm 70-plus years old. I've lived here all my life. I've seen a lot of change in Apex, and it's good change. One of the things that I like about Apex is the planning that we're talking about here. Over the years, you've got, everything's going to change. You've got a choice. Plan or just let it happen? And I think Apex has done a great job of planning. And one of the examples of that is our property. This plan, and you've heard this said here tonight several times, the previous plan, 2045 land use plan, most everything in this, in our project fits into that. The other thing is, obviously, the, everybody is excited about the 2015, the Money Magazine, Apex is the best place to live in, in America. And that is obviously, means Apex has got to be doing things right to get that. I want to take this opportunity for my family to thank Lennar and this board for getting this project to this point. Also, you don't get a project like this without some obstacles. Obviously, we've got a couple of obstacles that have already sort of been taken care of. Sewer access was definitely one. And then the 100% of the South Salem Street, which you're talking about, that lane all the way down, 100% of that right way's got to come off of our land because of the river track on the other side, which was another obstacle. And then the bridges are obviously the other, they're the big obstacle.
Thank you, Mr. Poe.
My family supports this rezoning and would like to see this passed, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Stephen Doran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just hear some questions in here.
Okay. Got any questions?
I was a chance, yeah.
Come on up.
So.
Awesome. I didn't get that when I walked in.
NBA bubble, that's good.
Don't get your own raincoat.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions when I was reading through the packet. One was regarding the staff's suggestion that if there was not going to be pedestrian access via a bridge, especially, I guess both bridges, have you guys thought about just a pedestrian-only and bicycle-only type of connection that could be planned for in this area?
Yes. Yeah, and actually Bob Zomel might be actually better suited. He's got the language that we present and work with staff outside of that. So Bob, I'll let you actually answer that. I'll hang up, get additional time.
Good evening. Bob Zomel with McAdams. Good to see everyone tonight. Thanks for your time, because I know it's getting late. Is it up on the screen? Yes. We do, we did work with staff on a new condition. This is just a slide that we added just to explain it. And this is how the condition will read, and I've got it written here to add and give to Amanda after the hearing. So we're going to add a section in our PUD document that's called Future Grade Separated Pedestrian Crossing. And the language reads, and it's on your screen, "At the time of major site plan for any development in Paws I and J, developer agrees to dedicate an approximately 25 by 25-foot area along the South Salem Street frontage to serve as a connection point for a future grade-separated pedestrian connection across South Salem Street and the railroad to be constructed by others. This area may overlap the 15-foot street skate buffer along South Salem Street. If the bicycle and pedestrian system plan map has not been amended to reflect a grade separated crossing of South Salem Street and the railroad in this vicinity, the area for a connection point shall not be required." So this image just shows conceptually kind of what that could look like. Obviously, this is just a span of a, that's about the same span. It's probably a little further than spanning South Salem Street. So the way it would probably work would be you'd have stair and elevator towers on either side of South Salem, and then the other side of the railroad with a center support that would allow a future connection to be built anywhere in Paws I and J along that frontage.
So you're saying this is a pedestrian and bicyclist bridge? Is that right?
Yeah, we just want to, if this is approved, we don't want to completely preclude the ability if Apex or somebody wanted to make a connection pedestrian-wise, we would be able to reserve or dedicate an area for that to land, and we'd work with the town to kind of figure out where it needed to go along there.
And that drawing shows like, I guess, an elevator and then a couple stairs?
Yeah, so we tried to show that, we were trying to kind of show that the size would work, and so what that is, is a stair tower, an elevator, a mechanical room. And the image you see there, it's about the size of the image you see, the bridge you see there. That one may be a little bit different shape. It might be a little bigger than that. But those dimensions are coming straight out of actual, like, medical facility buildings, staircases and elevators. We tried to build it just to show the scale would work.
Do you have any evidence, or any examples of a 25 by 25 being big enough for a landing like this?
Yeah, I mean, that, that image right there, the picture, the, that's about a 25-foot square. It might be 26. It's hard to measure it on Google Earth. But we've also found some that cross, for example, the light rail in Charlotte that are about 17 by 20. So there's so many ways to do it. The beauty of these type of stairwells is they don't have to align with the finished floor of a building. So in a building, you got a 14-foot floor, and it has to land, the landing has to align. If it needs to be smaller, it just means you've got more landings. It just switchbacks more as you go up. Think of it like going up the water slide with your kids, you know? It just needs to go around more times to get up there. Thank you.
Have you seen this?
Well, staff would like to point out that if this condition is accepted and approved by town council, then staff will need to come back with a bicycle and pedestrian systems plan map update, because this is not reflected on our bike ped plan. So not only this pedestrian crossing, but also how it ties in to pedestrian facilities on the other side of the railroad. So that will require a subsequent map amendment.
Does staff currently have an opinion on this condition and its efficiency, or is it something you need to look at to come back later with?
So in terms of providing connectivity, it addresses one of the concerns that we laid out, and actually, I think I failed to say that one, as far as getting across the tracks and the street. So this would help with bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. It doesn't address the other concerns that were laid out. So, you know, it's, it's better to have a plan for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, but it's not building anything, and it doesn't address the vehicular connectivity.
I have one more question for them. Regarding the westbound, on this again, westbound Apex Barbecue right turn onto Kelly, you mentioned the driveway was too close, or it was kind of interfering with that. It looks to me on the map that there's some space there after the driveway. That would be a shorter than 200 feet, but not a full amount of turn, but a little bit, or I'm not sure how much, but some amount of space. Have you guys, you guys looked at that when you, when you had staff's reaction of that we'd like that constructed, to say, okay, well, it'll be easier to do like 75 feet or 100 feet before that driveway, after the driveway ends?
Yeah, there's, for a, for a right-of-way, like Apex Barbecue, you normally can get one extra lane in there within the right-of-way. And the left turn lane is in there, because that's typically, if you had a choice to put a left turn lane or a right turn lane at an intersection, you get three lanes in there to fit in the right-of-way. Because it's a signalized intersection, you almost always would build left, almost always, just because it helps, the left turn helps get that traffic out so that the through traffic can go and the rights can go. And so even if you, so it wouldn't fit in the right-of-way, but even if you could build a really short right turn lane there, what would happen is when that light turns red, the cars are going to stack up and kind of, you know, it wouldn't take but three or four cars, and it's going to stack them. You can't even get into it anyway. So you have to wait for the light to turn green, and when the light turns green, the through traffic will go through and the right turns can, can make the turn. So you have to kind of wait for the light to turn green anyway. So it's not going to do you a whole lot of good to have a really short right turn lane there, but it still wouldn't fit in that, in that right-of-way. I don't know if that makes sense, but the left turn lane's the key to making that work better.
Okay, useful.
Much better.
Okay. I'm just thinking about the peakway at Olive Chapel, and when they put that right turn lane, it did a lot, but you know how long that one is, Russell? Going south of the peakway at Olive Chapel? That was built maybe last year?
Yeah, that's, I think that's probably roughly 200.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one other thing on that that I didn't mention. It was NC DOT had looked at it and was not requiring that, so, they, they sometimes take into account things like right-of-way constructability, sometimes, not every time, but that was not required from them. Thank you.
Okay.
And I just have a question for staff, with anybody from staff who might want to address this. With the transportation improvements that are being offered, can someone comment about the impact on traffic flow to the best that you all can in the surrounding area?
Well, the recommendations in our report are based on the UDO requirements. So, to give you an idea of what the purpose behind a traffic impact analysis is, to determine what the developer needs to do to mitigate the impact of their traffic. It's not necessarily solving all the traffic congestion problems or even solving long-term congestion problems. What it's doing is it's basically trying to equate a reasonable, you know, reasonable offset to what they're putting on the roadway. So, as we discussed, you know, four-laning Salem Street along their frontage like they talked about, that certainly goes a long way toward improving access along the most-traveled corridor on the frontage of their project. You know, again, as far as their, as far as their build-out goes, what we saw in the analysis was, at their build-out, you already see a need for an additional lane across the 540 Bridge, which no one's building. That was part of our discussion with Salem Street, and, and that's what led to the alternative for staff agreeing with DOT that an additional northbound lane was a reasonable offset for that. Doesn't solve the problem on the bridge, but it's additional infrastructure that helps the overall, you know, their overall capacity on the network. And then, of course, Apex Barbecue or Kelly Road, there's going to be congestion there. The applicant has proposed some reasonable improvements at that location. We are asking for a couple more, as we pointed out. But still, long-term, that's not solving the overall capacity problem of, you know, Salem, of Kelly Road, for instance, needs to be four-lane divided at some point based on our transportation plan. And they're not proposing to do that, nor is anyone else, and it's not required for, to mitigate their traffic based on the UDO. So, does that help understand, is there anything additional that I left out of that discussion?
Fix it.
Yeah. A lot of people, and a lot of people do get frustrated because, you know, they see traffic congestion, and you can never build your way out of traffic congestion. You know, anybody's been to a big, been to Washington DC, been to Atlanta, Georgia, been to New York, I mean, you see it everywhere. But as development is proposed, what you try to do is you provide transportation alternatives. You try and get them to mitigate as much of their traffic impact as you can. Typically, for developments like this, a lot of what you get is turn lanes at their intersections where they intersect the roadway. You'll get, you know, if you're lucky, you'll get a lot of widening. Maybe you'll get some roads built out to their ultimate section. But as you get further off-site, further and further away, those developments are not providing improvements to other facilities. So, other existing roadways, like other two-lane roadways or roadways that haven't been widened yet to four-lane like they're supposed to be, if they're not being done by others, this development will have some incremental impact on that, but it's not something we can say they need to do based on the UDO. And at some point, it becomes unreasonable to ask a developer to do that because it's beyond what they could afford in the scope of their, the scope of their work, because they obviously, they have to make a profit on their development. So, they can't just do all the improvements for us and walk away with, with nothing, so... That help?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jamie, come up.
If I may just add a little color to that. I mean, I think, I appreciate Russell's comments, but it's not all about profit. It is us looking at what the trip distribution is on the areas where we're not making those improvements. And, you know, there's, there's distribution from where our cars are coming and which intersections they're impacting, and that the additional improvements we're not making have very low trip distribution from our trips. So, we're doing, where the impact is mainly from us, we're making all of those improvements. And that's the four pages of improvements that you see in the PUD. It's just these last other, others that we're not, that we're not hitting. And I think the right-of-way and DOT approval is significant as well. They looked at these improvements, and if they felt that they were warranted and needed, they would have mandated them, and they didn't. And there's a significant issue with the signal at Woodall and how close that is to the other signal that's been requested, where even if it was something that we would be willing to do, DOT couldn't approve them because they're too close together. So, there's legitimate reasons that are not just profit development, or the developer of the profit, the profit of the developer, that, why we have said that we can accommodate these. But we are accommodating the $6.1 million worth of, of traffic improvements that are generated by our site, that will make real near-term improvements to this area, and were proposed, you know, with the numbers I listed in the tax generation, that those could become capital improvement projects that would be borne by the revenue generated from this, instead of borne by existing taxpayers where you have to do a bond. The alternative is, if this rezoning fails, that, those will ultimately become capital improvement projects that you have to fund with, with your own coffers, with existing taxpayers here, because people will not be able to meet the land use plan and the transportation plan improvements to a higher level than we already are. So, we think this is the best alternative, and that's why we're not making those additional recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been made aware, we do have two recorded comments, so if we can play those at the side.
This written comment was submitted by Karen Davis, who lives at 1914 Woodall Crest Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed amendments to the thoroughfare and collector's street plan map. I made these comments at the July 13th Planning Board meeting, but when deliberation about whether to recommend version one or version two of the proposed amendments came to a vote, focus shifted to placement of a new elementary school versus a flyway over the railroad tracks, and my concerns got lost in the discussion. Reiterating my concern, I requested that an additional change be made to the thoroughfare and collector's street plan to include changing the speed limit of the .19 mile stretch of Woodall Crest Drive between Apex Barbecue Road and Aspen River Lane from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. As you can see from the attached screenshot of the plan, section highlighted in purple, circled in red, this short stretch of road is adjacent to a residential neighborhood. As planned, the typical driver would turn from Apex Barbecue onto Woodall Crest and accelerate to 35 miles per hour. Going around the curve after only .15 miles, the driver would have only .04 miles with no prior notice to reduce their speeds. They could either turn onto Aspen River, no stop sign in the plan, or, with no warning, quickly reduce their speed to 25 miles per hour because houses with street-facing driveways occur immediately after passing Aspen River. I was told that a 25 miles per hour sign could be placed after Aspen River, but at that point, it's too late to safely slow down before entering the residential section. With the curve of the road and the immediate need to either turn or reduce speed to 25 miles per hour, it seems illogical that the .19 miles leading up to this point be at the higher speed limit. Lowering the speed limit on this small stretch of road should make little impact on the overall transportation plan for the town of Apex, but it will make a significant difference to the 51 homeowners and residents of Woodall Estates, where there are many families with young children who are required to walk to the neighboring Scotts Ridge Elementary This written comment was submitted by Kathleen Freer of 311 Skinny Pine Court, Apex. She writes, "Dear Town of Apex Planning Board and Town Council, I'm a voting resident that lives in Scots Mill. I am writing regarding what I understand to be an application by Stephen Dorn of Lennar to change the designation of a portion of PIN 0731761944 from office employment to high-density residential. As an Apex resident, I am disappointed by the consideration of more high-density residential units in our lovely town, adding to the already explosive development of such units. I understand the mighty dollar is a sweet temptation, but I'm hoping the board and council will overlook that this time and not change the designation of the land use. I believe building more townhomes, apartments, et cetera, is setting this town up to fail in the future. The school situation alone is enough reason to decline this application. I do realize the schools are set by the county, but each elected official in this town has a duty to be smart about what our town can offer. Having more new residents that are angry to find out there's no room at their local school will only continue to breed discontent. Though we aren't responsible for schools, excuse will only carry so far. I'd be happy to see affordable, medium-density senior housing go in, or an office, retail, affordable senior living mixed facility here at this location, but adding more townhomes or apartments in place of office space is simply reckless. I will be watching on July 13th and July 21st. I really hope my town officials won't let me down. Kind regards, Kathleen Freer."
Right, with that, a closed public hearing this time. Refer to matter to council for discussion, lead to a possible motion.
Hi. Ask for transportation, the speed reduction. Is that something you can attend to?
Well, the, the arrangement of those roadways is a 35 mile per hour major collector, Woodall Crest Drive, that then turns south at a T-intersection. So, it was, it's 35, 35 mile an hour speed limit until you get to the intersection. Beyond that, it becomes a residential street. I don't know if we have a diagram we can show. And then, so, so this is the 35 mile per hour section, and my understanding of the comment is the concern is about students walking to the school. I don't know why you would cross the road anywhere along the free-flow 35 mile an hour section. You would simply walk along the sidewalk to the stop sign and cross the intersection. So, I don't, I don't see how a speed limit change from 35 to 25 affects safety in terms of crossing the road at all, because no one has to cross the road. And if you do, I mean, there's a sidewalk on the other side to get, to go south as well. It is a major collector, so by default, we, we post those at 35 miles per hour. If certain characteristics of the roadway or development layout later determine that it needs to be posted lower, we'd normally do that through a speed study. We put on our radar detector, and we would count traffic every period of a week. We would look at 85th percentile speed. If it looks like 85th percentile speed is lower, say around 25 or 30 miles per hour, it might be reasonable to lower the speed limit. If speeds are higher, the concern would be lowering, artificially lowering the speed limit would just mean more people are speeding. And then, we'd get more speeding complaints because people aren't driving 25. And it's like, well, maybe they're not driving 25 because the road wasn't designed for 25, it was designed for 35, and now you've created a whole bunch of new speeders. But as you look at it, I mean, it really is a major collector street where we don't have any residential driveways, so, so that does help. I understand it's adjacent to the neighborhood, but we have houses adjacent to 35 mile an hour and 45 mile an hour roads all over town. The goal is to not have driveways directly connect. But again, beyond that point, this is a residential street, and it should be posted 25 miles per hour.
I guess the point is, it's such a small, I mean, as far as major collectors go, it's a pretty strange one. It's got a tiny little segment there. So, why not, for consistency's sake, have it all be 25?
Well, again, I would say we'd like to conduct a speed study to determine what actual speeds are out there, because, I mean, and I haven't, I haven't driven it to really test the speed myself. Sometimes I'll go out and people have speed complaints, and I'll just drive over myself and see what it feels like. Because we have some 25 mile per hour neighborhood streets that when you drive them, it's very easy to, to watch your speed creep up above 30 miles per hour just because you have some long, even though they're driveways, you have some long straight sections, you don't have a lot of people parking on the street, and, and that's where some of the speeding complaints come from. So, in a case like this, I'd really want to study it a little bit more first before we make any kind of recommendation.
Right, and that's what I was asking. Look at it to see what the purpose is under there.
And I agree.
And it is, and it's also possible to post 30 miles per hour if we have an ordinance for 30 miles per hour. So, that's another thing we can consider in the future if we have some of these roadways that are not quite, they're a little bit higher level than residential street, but maybe 85th percentile speed is lower than 35. 25 seems too low, 35 seems too high. It is possible. So, you know, that may be one of the recommendations we'd bring forward, once we look at a little closer.
And to be clear, I think, I don't think this is something we have to solve right here as part of this rezoning.
Right.
But if it's, a comment was made, I think it's a reasonable question. It's something to consider if this moves forward.
So, we can assume you will study that for us, Mr. Dorn?
Yeah, we certainly can. I mean, at this time, it's only, it's only neighborhood traffic that's going in there, so it's a really low volume. It probably doesn't make a lot of sense to study it right now because we're not going to get a very good sample size. Once it's connected, we'll, we'll have a better idea. I mean, we can study it early, but it's not going to be a whole lot of traffic, so, you know, we're open to, we're open to whatever recommendation you want to, want to provide. If we, if you want us to put it on the list now, we can put it on the list now, and we'll, you know, once some of the other complaints get addressed, we can, we can get to it and see what it looks like.
Yeah, I agree with what, what had already been said, and I think, you know, we continue to get complaints about speed, and we've had this conversation about, well, because people are, are the nature of the road, and people, like, why don't we just try to, like, follow the speed limit? I mean, I, I just don't know how that's so hard, when, you know, we got people, we want people to be able to walk, you know, walk about, whether it's your neighborhood or outside their neighborhood, and, you know, you think about the nature of some of the roads, it's really hard. Some don't have curbs, you know? Think about like Evans Road. It's really hard to, to, to walk on that when people are really speeding because there's not a curb there. And so, I just think that in general, I'd like to see us really look at that, and we just need to get used to what the speed limit really should be to keep everyone safe.
I want to chime in on this topic, too. I, I regret the design of that road, and I actually regret that it wasn't part of the whole, this whole development. I, I wasn't the council then, and I, I wish this had been, I'm not sure what happened, but I think it's, it was a planning blunder, in my opinion, that it was, it's like that. Maybe it had to be like that with the streams, but I just want to express my disappointment in that, in how that was designed in the, in that existing neighborhood.
And that it turned, takes a turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's mainly because of the stream. That's correct. Because the problem was you couldn't meet the major collector standards and cross the stream at an angle that would be acceptable to the core, so we had to make that turn. And in some ways, it's, it's good because it's built-in traffic calming, that people have to slow down and turn. So, even though it's a 35 mile per hour road, it, it actually does encourage a little bit lower speeds. That's one of the things we do. Maybe, maybe your speed's posted higher for the classification, but then you have certain built-in features that make sure that people's speed doesn't go much above that, so...
Okay.
And I would just like to point out to council and the caller and those who are listening, Mr. Havens reminded me of our current residential data that we have in terms of single-family versus townhomes versus multifamily. I know it feels like a lot of townhomes and apartments are going up, but in reality, our single-family homes in Apex are about 64% of our residential developments. Townhomes are 17.7, and multifamily are currently 14.3. So, that's important just to keep in mind with the big picture of our development. And that includes, you know, projects that have been approved, built out, and pending.
Good.
Yeah, and, you know, this is also, you know, we have certain areas that are designated where higher density is needed. And this is one of those areas. I'm glad to see that this whole area has kind of come together as one block to provide this kind of mixed-use and high-density area because that's, you know, is what we planned for. To me, the, the idea of this is, is simple and dry-cut, is do we want a school there or do we want a road there in that bottom section? And, you know, that we have, we definitely have a high need for a school in this area. We also have transportation, you know, issues and need for roads. Honestly, I think, you know, in my opinion, we have a higher need for a school in this area, so...
Let me wait with some notes I made here. Before we talk about the school versus the bridge thing, I just want to come back to some of the other things that I see in this rezoning, which I think we haven't seen before and are very important to note, and I think have the potential to set a precedent, which could be very useful for us going forward, is sort of setting kind of a baseline of what we want. First off, the affordable housing condition? We haven't seen anything like that, that I've seen in the past couple of years in Apex. The fact that they're dedicating money or land, or the equivalent of it, for affordable housing is something that we really need in this town, and that's something that was asked for and was provided by the, by the applicant. A big thing of mine is, is the canopy replacement. It's something that I've been talking about for a really long time, you know? And this applicant, I, I mentioned it to him, and they said, okay. So, every, I, I think it was phrased, on the residential section, all the tree canopy will be replaced with, including a fee and lieu again, which is amazing, as again, it's something I want to see be standard. The fact that they're bringing this here today without... The fact that they're bringing this here today without having it being in U D O yet or anything, to me, is commendable. She mentioned the infrastructure improvement, 6.1 million was it, including a lot, you know, on all the surrounding roads. A lot of that's required, some other stuff, you know, there's some negotiation back and forth. I mean, it's troublesome that we couldn't come to an agreement about everything together. I also think with a, with a project this large and this complex, I'm not entirely surprised that the applicant and staff couldn't agree 100% on every single improvement needed. There, I think, were three ones that were requested that weren't provided. There were dozens of other ones that were provided. I've heard the applicant's sort of explanation, it sounds reasonable. I wouldn't know as well as staff would. Like I said, it's unfortunate we didn't have complete agreement, but I do want to point out there is significant agreement on the rest of it that they are providing, including some extra stuff that was provided over, since the planning board meeting. So it's just a massive project. Again, when I first heard about this project, I said two things. I said, I want to see all the trees replaced and I want to see you sell off part of the project and build a school. Kind of like smiling under my breath. And they did both. Like, what else can you say? Like, the measure of a project that you look at should be, doesn't make the town better, does it solve the problem that we have? And as has been hinted at, I really think we're almost in a crisis situation for school capacity in Western Apex. Every single school in the area is either capped or over 100% capacity, you know, trending towards being capped in the future. And this is causing great inconvenience to our citizens, to put it mildly. The way this project is set up, where it provides a school, where that school has enough capacity in the long term to provide for the residents that are being added, plus additional capacity, as we saw, to relieve the overcrowding in adjacent schools, I think is amazing, is a demonstration of a project measurably making the town better, which is a center that I think that we should apply. So I'm very pleased to see that. And by the way, I should mention also, that's long-term. Short-term, this school is going to be open, if this is approved, years before all those houses are there. So, starting in 2025 or 2026, there's going to be, I think, part of the applicant, or part of the application said that maybe 600 townhomes or 400 or something. Only a fraction of the total build-out will be there. I think it said only contributing 100 students to a school that holds 750. So that's, medium-term, a large amount of surplus capacity, which will, again, alleviate the overcrowding as we continue to work on this school issue. We do have another school coming in Apex Friendship, where, as Ms. Parker said, there's an additional need for another school. This school would give us the capacity, the runway, to help us get all those pieces in place so we're set up for success long-term. So I'm really pleased with that.
I guess I'll go next. So yeah, I agree that this project is unique and I look for that. I have previously voted against, against some advice, but voted against some mixed use because I just wanted the commercial part, not the residential part. So I know I can't do that here. So that this is mixed use. The parts that are really attractive to me are, you know, my passion for affordable housing, which, in my opinion and in my expertise, we will see an even more beloved community, we'll have more diversity of people, perspectives and all, and socioeconomic status if we do that. I like the fact that it's not just a, you know, a talking point, but actually forward-thinking about a fund. And if we don't have a fund, there's, you know, they're not going to just let this go. They're all thinking about alternatives to making sure that money goes somewhere. The type, you know, the way that you're looking at the standard of affordable housing, I appreciate that. Of course, the tree preservation, I like that. Mentioning sort of things that are pedestrian-friendly, people-friendly, bus stops, culture and the arts, even though we can't really demand or ask for aesthetics due to state lawmakers' bill, but, you know, certainly you did take care to think about aesthetics, which makes people want to get outside and be more out in their community. Of course, the school is just something that is, I think, will make this project be, if it passes, be something that we can try to work towards in other projects. And not just the school, but the pre-K. I am really interested in what this other thing could be, what this other school-based thing is. Is it a school-based health center or community center, whatever it is, to address more the social determinants, needs of children beyond school and education? So those are sort of my main, my main things there. So those are the things that I really wanted to, to express my gratitude for. I am troubled about sort of not coming to some full agreement and hope that we can figure out, if this passes, the transportation issues around this project. But I'd rather really look at kind of what our, what our urgent needs are right now. That's me.
Okay, I'll go. So I live, I've seen my house multiple times on these aerials. I live right in the area. And when I bought my house in 2009, I saw a 2004 town plan that had a mixed-use area in this vicinity. And I was like, and on the other side of train tracks, I guess, on the other part of your property. And I was like, that'd be great if it gets built. And so it's been 11 years now, you know, 16 years from the, when that plan was designed. Nothing's happened there, probably because of the difficulty with those crossings. Also, my neighborhood is going to have that Peakway Bridge nearby and I think those pictures you were showing are what our neighborhood is dealing with. And it is disruptive, just, it's going to be severely disruptive and it would be the same way here because of where the train tracks lie. So I think this is in, this is not exactly what that plan was in 2004, but it's in the spirit of the, of the plan. And I'm excited to be able to walk to some of these places and walk through the neighborhood and I'll do so probably, you know, all the time, probably. So I think my neighborhood, other than my home manner, I think my neighborhood will benefit from the amenities nearby. I think that traffic improvements, at least in the short term and maybe the medium term, will be, will be enough to alleviate the extra people in this area. And I mean, this area, being near these major roads, I think the townhomes and the apartments are something that's maybe appropriate for this kind of, near these major intersections. Maybe, we don't want it in some areas, but I think we do want it in this area. So I'm excited. And I hope that the commercial part is a success and that there's some good restaurants and other entertainment establishments and shopping centers and grocery stores and all that, so, because I'm going to walk to them and it's going to be great.
I would just like to say that I met with these developers at least three times, right before the pandemic hit. And it has continued to evolve and I have enjoyed watching the evolution of this project, although I know it's been very complicated and very complex. But I remember when, at the first meeting, I think I was asked, well, which one of these many things do you want? Help us prioritize. I said, I want them all. And you did it. These developers worked, you know, except for the transportation piece that I'm concerned too, that we couldn't get 100% agreement. But everything else, this, these developers worked to help with environmental stewardship, with housing affordability, with school capacity. These are all issues that voters told me they were very concerned about when I campaigned and ran for council last year. So I just really appreciate the collaboration to get this done and I'm really excited about this project.
I'll make a motion to approve with the added condition about the crossing and anything else needed. Oh, sorry, both things, right?
We need to do public hearing item three first and then public item four.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Okay, should we do it one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay, so, am I saying motion to approve the scenario two of the transportation plan as presented?
Yeah, transit plan map.
With the train?
So the scenario two was a thoroughfare and collector street plan map proving, and then there was a transit plan map amendment as well.
Okay. So everything that was a scenario two and the transportation and transit, both, I'm make a motion to approve. Okay.
All right. Motion second. Right, any further discussion with it?
I just want to say, like, I appreciate staff's dedication and the planning board's dedication and the way they defended and discussed the transit map as it currently stands. And I don't at all, I don't think they acted, I respect their judgment. I think that we, as a council, have more freedom to make these kind of adjustments at these moments. And I think what you're seeing tonight is we're about to make a trade-off where we're saying, we need this school, period. And if we need to adjust the transit map for a series of bridges, which, you know, are far off in the future, then that's, I think, a call that we, you know, that we can make. So I just want to point that out, that I feel that the planning board and staff have done a good job here and the action's up to this point. And I think we're about to go in a different direction and that's not in any way a criticism of what's been done before us.
I want to chime in too. I'm disappointed in the transit part because that 2004 plan had a train station there. So if we're not going to do light rail, I think it's appropriate, but I think this county needs to get together and build some, you know, it's taking forever. And if, the longer the wait, the more expensive it's going to get. So we need to build this train so we can get this Apex part in the works. And I'm anxious for that to happen. But anyway, I think it's appropriate for the commuter rail, but I am disappointed, to be honest, that our county has not gone that way.
That we haven't built the train yet?
Yeah, and that Chapel Hill and Durham went the way they did too. So all those things, I'm unhappy with that, but that's the reality.
All right. Any further discussion on it? Are we ready to take a vote on it? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, it passed unanimously. Move to public hearing number four. Is there a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
And just to be clear, that's a motion for the land use map amendment and the rezoning with the additional condition.
That's correct, yes.
All right. Got a motion?
Take it.
Take it.
All right, discussion. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, they're passing unanimously. All right, move to public hearing number five. Public hearing and possible motion regarding various amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment.
Okay, we have several amendments before you, the first three of which are from the, at the direction of the planning committee regarding resource conservation area. And so, the first amendment is to the Plan Development District Standards Section to increase the RCA reduction that can be approved by town council and add additional performance standards. And so currently, you as town council, whenever there's a planning unit development or traditional neighborhood development rezoning before you, you can reduce the amount of RCA required by up to 2%. The request is to be able to reduce the amount of RCA required by up to 10% if certain standards are met. And in the case of planning unit developments, it would be the current standards of the provision of a non-residential component or an overall density of up to, it currently says six units per acre. The proposal is to increase that to seven to be consistent with the land use map for medium-density residential. And what's new is environmental measures, including the installation of solar, and this wording is consistent with language that we've been seeing over the past few years. The installation of a geothermal system or energy efficiency standards that exceed the minimum building code requirements. And this is example, so that it's including but not limited to. And similar language in the traditional neighborhood districts. So this would allow you as the council to see what is being offered by the applicant and evaluate the amount of reduction that may or may not be appropriate for that development, given its context. Are there any questions on that amendment?
Is there any way that we can add affordable housing also as a requirement to this as a percentage?
So, once we get through our affordable housing plan, which is underway, we anticipate coming back with several amendments related to affordable housing, and this will be one of them. But the U D O does not have a definition of affordable housing right now. And so until that's in place, we can't have a standard that relates to that.
So we're working on the definition and hope to bring that to you before the full plan, so that we can go ahead and get some of these amendments, go ahead and schedule them.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I've been thinking about community gardens in neighborhoods and if ones that are large enough to like, or maybe if they like donate 30% of what they get out to like a food bank, that might be another thing. I mean, I've been thinking about that in my head, so we may talk about that at the next planning committee meeting, but that's just a hearsay right now, but it's in my head rolling around.
And I agree. I hope we have like a whole schedule of improvements that the developer could offer. And the whole idea here is to like formalize what's been kind of an informal sort of discussion where we ask for stuff and they sort of do it out. I think it might be better to write it down and get a list of examples.
The next amendment is to the standards for off-site RCA, which, there will be more to come. We had advertised more changes, but after meeting with the planning committee again in June, realized there's some more work that needs to go into determining what the appropriate ratio is for off-site RCA to onsite RCA and what that looks like. So for now, the only amendment that is proposed is to allow off-site RCA by right if all of the existing standards in the U D O were met, instead of having to come to you through a quasi-judicial public hearing, which we believe is one of the impediments of the using, developers using off-site RCA. Any questions on that amendment? Okay, number three is proposed changes to the amount of RCA that's required. And specifically, there's just some minor numbering changes here. For development south and west of 540, the current requirement for RCA is 25%. The proposal is to increase that amount of required RCA for single-family and townhome uses to 30% and leave the amount required the same for mixed-use, non-residential, multifamily development. And then inside the Peakway, reduce the amount of RCA required from the current 20% to 10%, noting that within the small-town character area, no RCA is required. So the thought being that it could encourage redevelopment or development inside the Peakway closer to our core. Any questions on that amendment?
Just want to point out that, in my mind, this is paired with amendment number one, where we're increasing what's required and we're also providing ways to reduce it, again, trying to formalize what's been sort of an informalization. My hope is that most developments going forward would get some credit and the status quo wouldn't be altered too much. It would just be more of a formalized process as opposed to kind of a haggling thing now.
Okay. The remaining three amendments are requested by planning staff. And the first is the, an amendment to add a prohibited use in residential districts. And this is to prohibit parking on residential property that is not accessory to the residential use. And so parking that's not accessory to residential will be prohibited, including but not limited to student parking, parking for a nearby special event, and off-site parking for another use. For the purpose of this section, student parking is defined as parking at a residence or on a residential lot for the purpose of coming and going from a vehicle to a school or from a school to a vehicle. This definition of student parking shall not apply to students who reside at the home. Any questions on this amendment?
Assuming we've had problems with this.
Yes. Near both high schools.
To say the least.
The next amendment is to the residential building standards and the small-town character overlay. And currently, there's a prohibition of slab-on-grade foundations. You know, for the most part, single-family duplexes, they all have raised foundations. Well, that's not typical for multifamily, for four units or above, and where multifamily is allowed, we don't want to have an impediment to that. And so the proposal was to exempt that multifamily structures containing more than four units from the slab-on-grade prohibition. Any questions here?
Assuming that helps accessibility, accessibility issues, yes or no?
I mean, it could. There is the ability for ramps, but that would be the, what would have to be installed if there was a raised foundation, is you would have to have a ramp for accessibility instead of having a, potentially a level entry. And then finally, an amendment to the design standards, this is basically architectural standards in the U D O. standards in the UDO, to expand the applicability of the design standards for residential development to all zoning districts, retaining the exemption, of course, for one and two-family dwellings. And so this would allow all of our design standards to apply to apartment communities. Any questions on that? All right, planning staff is recommending approval of all of the amendments. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of all the amendments at their meeting last week.
Will we approve?
We need a public hearing.
Oh, right.
She already had another question. So, um, I got one question for you. On number four, the parking, did we get a lot of complaints about that, um, do you know of, as far as Apex Friendship specific?
Yes. There was complaints at that school, and there have been significant number of complaints in the past, um, at, in the area of Apex High as well.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, um, go ahead and open up public hearing. We don't have anybody sign up for that. So I'll close public hearing, refer the matter back to council. Possible motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, second.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I just wanna maybe speak up and say, I've enjoyed having Terry on the, the planning committee. We've, I think we've done some good stuff, and we'll probably do more. And, um, I think I kinda, I temper your heat maybe a little bit of think, wanting changes. I try to, I think we're trying to do things incrementally that move this town in the right direction, move it to the kind of development we want, the kind of protection that we want in certain areas. And so I think, um, I suggested the, the mayor that, um, if you're gonna put Terry on there, make sure I'm on there too. Truth be told, I, I think, uh, you know, we can be drastic, but I think, I think more progress can be made, and developers can have certainty when it's these incremental changes, but moving in the right direction, I think, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, I think, right?
Yeah.
I think?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this too. I'm glad to see the changes coming up in there. I, I see they're moving in the right direction.
All right.
Yep.
Discussion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, it passes unanimously. We move now to new business, item one. Possible motion to amend the town's personnel policies to include June nineteenth, Juneteenth as a paid town holiday for employees. Mayor Pro Tim, Nicole Dozier.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I thought I would start out by, uh, letting folks know what paid holidays that our town employees have. So New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, two days, Christmas, three days. Um, and the way, and we know we have some, um, of our staff who, uh, work on a twenty-four hour operation, which we really appreciate. So, just so people know how that works, if, um, there is a holiday schedule, we need to vary because it's observed on a Saturday, for example, or a Sunday, or because of someone the way they work, then, um, the, the day that's taken is approved in advance by the town manager. Um, so just wanted to share that. So in this situation, um, if this passes, and, um, June nineteenth, um, would be on a Saturday, and it would be observed on that Friday, the June the eighteenth. So, um, so the, the details of, um, the reason I wanted to do this, I chair, as chair of personnel, um, is because Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. Dating back to eighteen sixty-five, it was on June nineteenth that Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger, arriving at Galveston, Texas with the news that the war had ended, but also to take command of the more than two thousand federal troops who were there to enforce the freedom of the estimated two hundred and fifty thousand Africans who were still enslaved. This was over two and a half years after President Lincoln's preliminary emancipation proclamation. In light of the significance of this day in American history, in the United States, and in an effort to continue improving our policies and practices to enhance a culture of belonging for all members of town staff, it is, it is the Personnel Committee's recommendation to amend the town's personnel policies to include June nineteenth, Juneteenth as a paid town holiday for employees. Um, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to amend the town's personnel policies to include June nineteenth, Juneteenth as a paid town holiday for employees. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Third.
Okay, that's a new one.
All right, discussion on this.
Yeah, I was, um-
Yes.
Councilman Dozier, we've, we've talked on the phone about this, and I appreciate that conversation. Um, when I was thinking about this, and I try and line it up with my political philosophy, I'm a John Stuart Mill acolyte, where I say, greatest good for the greatest number of people. And, um, I was thinking about, in, you know, twenty-twenty during this time, when we're all, um, learning about ourselves and learning about each other more, um, was there consideration to replacing, adding this day as a replacement, a revenue-neutral thing, and think about where that, wherever that thirteen thousand was, I think was the direct cost, and maybe, I'm not sure, there's indirect cost of, of work that's, that's being lost. And funding something like, I, my thought was a neighborhood, uh, neighborhood improvement grant program that we, you know, maybe target toward vulnerable, uh, neighbor, like Wake County Vulnerability Index. And having it, so having this be a revenue-neutral just to switch, and thinking about trying to do something like that for neighborhoods that maybe are, um, would benefit from that kind of program.
Well, that's a lot of questions. Um, so let me see if I can try to answer. Um, my answer is no. I did not think about, um, the cost that the town manager, um, did state to me that was minimal based on our budget. Um, what I did think about is the cost when people, um, may feel that there's, there's something that they would like to, um, celebrate or be proud of. I think there's a cost there when people don't feel that they can fully celebrate and share something such as June nineteen, June nineteenth, which is, you know, one of the, I guess, the oldest celebrations that occurred in this country, um, that started in Texas, and just hasn't, it's almost like the opposite, that people just don't even know about it. There are people who are, are directly impacted by, um, by the fact that people who were enslaved, um, you know, it was two and a half years later when they got the news, and that it was just a rejection of, we're not gonna stop until the federal troops tell us to. Um, so no, I think there's a cost to people feeling like, um, their leadership and the, the community around, um, who rallied around Black History Month, like nothing I've seen in, you know, in other towns personally that I've seen, just the way it was done. And so, no, I think there's a cost to people feeling that they want to not just have the diversity here, but they'd be included and belonging here. And I think this is one of the things in this moment that I wanted to do. Um, as far as either-or, I mean, in this moment, as an advocate, I don't, I don't tend to think of either-or. I mean, I think that we can walk and chew gum, and I think we can do both and. And so, you know, um, you know, I'm happy to call a Personnel Committee meeting, which I've told anyone. I'd rather give people more than less. And I think that the more you give people who are doing excellent jobs and providing excellent service at every level and every department, then the excellent service that people tend to get. And I think, um, having the Think X Apex Day of Service is on a Saturday, and people can't, people are getting those spots filled up who want to do that. I think that's another way. We can do that on a Friday. I did, um, have a, a floating holiday that was added through our committee. People can use that. Um, but I also don't see, you know, when we look at days, I don't think we do a survey and ask people, well, what'd you do on MLK Day? You know, let's talk about it, let's write about it, you know, let's read about it, let's report about it. Um, we don't ask people, you know, on Christmas, well, you know, well, you know, that's three days, it costs this, you just celebrate Christ on Christmas, you know? So, um, I don't wanna micro-manage people's schedule. I just wanna say that people work hard for this town because it reflects in what we see every day, what people share about, you know, this town being, um, great, and having, um, people that work for it and are great ambassadors for this place. And so, I just wanted to say that, as someone who, as you can look at me, most of my heritage is from being Africans who were enslaved, that I'm not the only one. I might be the only one sitting on, on this council as a council member, but now we have a mayor, we have a town clerk, we have police officer, you know, we have, um, other staff that are coming in, um, who want to celebrate. And we have friendship community. That community, you know, at the death of Reconstruction, at the birth of Jim Crow, decided to reject Jim Crow. And I think this is the time to, to, to kinda go along with what, what's happened in this country, is figuring out how we can show we are in this together, and sort of like, and celebrate that that was a day, that slavery was over. And that's my, that's my long answer. I hope I answered all your questions.
I hope it would imply that, maybe the implication, I don't mean that a replacement would be taken away from Juneteenth. I, I don't think that. I think, I was thinking the, one of the Christmas days would be what I would suggest, if we were going that route. But, um, I'm hearing some, I get one day for Christmas, and I know people, for all the, all the holidays, I get one day. So I, it's a, I don't like it much, but, uh, this is three, it's, it's nice. Um, I've advocated this neighborhood grant program. Um, I think it would be a high impact for a high number of people for relatively low costs. And if we use it, the kind of some of vulnerability index type thing, I think, maybe for next year's budget, I'll, once again, put that as a suggestion. Cause I think, um, regardless of this action, I think that would be a high impact for a lot of people, action as well. So-
Happy to do that, happy to get you a map, the, to show you where to go in Census Block, happy to do that.
I saw, I've seen the map. It's, uh, yeah, cause I think the wealthier neighborhoods, they would be, maybe, you know, the Kerry program is first come, first served. I think we can do better than that, if we're, if we go such a program. But, that's enough about that program. We'll just let, let that-
Yeah, and I can end with, you know, I mean, I take significant time off for the holidays, but, I mean, but if I didn't, I think that way we should look at things is from a broader lens. So if, if someone doesn't get, have health insurance, that includes vision, then, but we can provide vision to town staff, that's what we do. So, that's just my perspective, and I'm looking at it from a broader lens. And so, um, you know, that's, that's kinda where I am. I don't wanna take holidays from people. I wish people to take off as many weeks as I do for Christmas, because I, I need downtime, and I think other people do too. So, I like to think about more and more how we do more for, for staff, which does more for people in the community as a whole. That's just my perspective. But thank you for the questions.
All right.
And I just wanted to add, Mayor Pro Tim, you had said, um, there is a floating holiday also for employees. So for people of different faith traditions, you know, because, I know we, you know, honor Good Friday and Christmas, but, but for people that practice different faith traditions, they have that floating holiday option, right, that they can also take?
Exactly.
Which I think is good.
Exactly. It's a day off. People can do what they choose to on the day off, you know?
Whether it be religion or not religion, but sure.
Well, they can work, I suppose.
Any other discussion on it?
Um, yeah, I just wanna take a moment to thank Mayor Pro Tim for leadership on this issue, and, uh, bringing this to, to the council. And I also wanna take a moment to thank, um, Commissioner Holmes for doing this at the county level. And I believe it was, um, Mayor Baldwin in Raleigh, I think also has passed as well. So, you can see a real, um, momentum here with, with celebrating this holiday. And I think, uh, it's, it's one of the most effective ways to, to raise awareness, is to get people off, like, well, I don't got a work day, what, what's going on? And they can learn about it, and it's a great thing for everyone. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely, I'll second that.
Well, as mayor, I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership also. And I, I will say this, um, there was, uh, two young people that planned a Juneteenth event downtown this year. And, uh, it was well-received, but the one thing, they expressed how important this was for them. And when we look at the direction we go as a town, this is about passing on to the next generation, and making sure that we take care of them. So I also wanna thank you for your leadership. I know this is something that's been on your heart for over a year now. You've been passionate about this. So this is your time, and, uh, this is the right time for Apex. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. And I did forget, I'm glad you mentioned that, with Commissioner Holmes and, and the whole commission, and, and doing that, and us being one of the towns that would do that. I appreciate that. Um, and the Juneteenth, I did attend that, and I will tell you, um, before we vote, is that, um, for, at my work, we did a Juneteenth event. We had people, we had over like two hundred people, you know, over lunch, and people from other states, cause they wanted to learn about it. So I think it's just important, and that really warms my heart. So, thank you all for the support. So that was my motion.
All right, we have a motion to second.
And a second and a third.
All right, and a third. All right, let's go ahead and vote on it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right.
Thank you.
It passes unanimously. All right, good job. All right, no closed session, work session. We adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.